Good morning. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of February 4th, 2016, called to order.
So the new one is current?
If you could, let me record show that all the commissioners are present today. And if you could join me now with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes today?
No.
No agenda changes. So our next item is a public comment period. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on a land use item that is not on our agenda this morning, this would be your opportunity.
Robert Mulvaney here, and this article on your desk this morning is your homework. And it has some important information in there about now that somebody out there is trying to control their lives, you know, planning and land use and all that should be done right here, not in the, not in Congress, not in some international organization. And aside from that, all I can say is, thank you for your good work, and you have my sympathy for all of the malaria you have to put up with. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, good morning, Lou Mayhew. I just wanted to make an observation. It seems to me that to a great extent, what you've done is systematically remove the public interest as you go through this document.
Remove what?
I should say, the long-term public interest from the document. You're systematically changing the language. And sometimes that is done by, under your, your theory, your notion that if we make an error in doing this, in what we exclude from the public interest, that that will be caught by council when they review the document, that that will be caught by the EIR. And I would just like to suggest a bit of caution, because what you may not factor in is the time that that process would take. So if what you've done is too far from what is going to be an acceptable document, the process to correct that is undoubtedly going to take a good bit of time. And what you could very well be doing is extending the period that it's going to take to get a document approved. So just an observation, you're going about this quite systematically. It might, there might be wisdom in tacking back towards, towards the middle. A little less reliance on the faith that the public interest will always be served by private property rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we are going to be moving on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of a lot of minutes.
Sorry.
(laughing) No, I'm sorry. We have to do them sometime.
Annette has been sequestered away in her office with the headphones on and door closed to try to get these out of the last several months, so playing catch-ups.
So at the last meeting, I wanted to abstain from Sep., I think it was the September 10th meeting, since I wasn't here. So do we need to pull those off the consent agenda?
If there's any that need to be changed or voted on separately because of absences, those should be pulled and voted on separately. If we're okay with the rest of them, then they could be taken care of with one motion.
Okay. So then I guess I'd like to pull September 10th, and actually also, I think it was December 3rd, I was absent at that meeting as well. And I've--
December 10th, did you say?
December 3rd.
Third, and--
September 10th.
Oh, September 10th.
Uh huh.
Okay.
And then I did have a few comments on the land use element, just grammatical things. So I suppose we should pull November 5th, too.
And I have one on the minutes for December 17th.
Okay.
One comment.
So it looks like the 24th, September 24th, October 8th, and January 14th are clear.
So maybe a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items 1, 4, 5, and 6 should be in order.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent calendar is approved. So--
I think that 1 and 6 could also be taken care of with a similar motion. You would just abstain from that motion.
Okay.
Unless there were changes that were necessary to either of those.
Were there any changes to 1 and 6, other than my wish to abstain because I was absent? Any other reason to pull 1 and 6? Nope. All right. So then is there a motion to approve--
Well, actually, on 1, I had a couple of real minor changes, which I've given to Annette. Do you want me to just tell you what they were?
What should we call them?
They're not substance.
I think there's minor grammatical corrections. We don't need to discuss if they're, if you give notes and Annette can correct those. Not a problem.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve 1 and 6? It's been moved?
Taken.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and all abstain from those two? So then we've got November 5th, and so we have 4 and 6 left. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So maybe we should just start with November 5th, discussion of the minutes from November 5th. Corrections there or additions?
And that is the one that includes the--
The land use--
Land use element.
Right.
And there were a number of changes that Commissioner Wooster had pointed out to us. Annette has gone through the tapes, listened to them again, and we did miss some things. And so I'd just sort of like to briefly identify what those are. There were a couple of grammatical punctuation changes that we don't need to worry about. But the first one, there was a question about, this is on page 7 of the land use element itself. RTB, the second sentence of that, the description of that, there was some discussion about deleting that second sentence. The record shows that it was actually added to A. It was kept in the motion that the, or the direction that the commission made was to retain that. There was some discussion at the very end about removing that. I said it wasn't a problem, but there wasn't any action taken by the commission to remove that. So that is accurate. The other changes that were done were to, on page 19, Policy 2C at the bottom of the page.
Excuse me, I think there was one on page 8, too. Under the CC. We took out--
Yes, took out "and service" from the description of the C, community center land use designation. The designation identifies a mix of residential, residential and commercial uses. LU 2C on page 19, update the zoning code 2 was stricken from that policy. On page 20, the LU 2E, transfer of development rights was removed, and the phrase "provide development flexibility" and was inserted into the end of the sentence. So it reads, "Adopt standards for the application of cluster development or other innovative techniques that may provide development flexibility and minimize development impacts on resource production or other sensitive lands." That was one that we missed. On 4D, we struck the word district. So this is recognized as toward downtowns rather than downtown districts. On page 22, 4H, top of the page, similar techniques to reduce the impact on existing land uses from dissimilar land uses was a change that was made that we had missed. And then on LU 5F, seek relationships with community, business, and professional groups. Business was inserted.
There should be a comma after community there.
Yes. So those changes, Commissioner Wooster had noted. We went back and verified, yes, those were changes that we'd missed. And so the revised land use element that Annette sent out last night identifies those changes, and those should be part of the minutes. And we will be posting those on the, well, replacing that. I think we already had posted the land use element on the website. We'll be replacing it with the corrected version. So with that, are there any other changes, other than a few minor grammatical commas and spacing and stuff like that?
I only had one, which was on LU 3. I was just seeing if it had been caught. And the distribution of land use pattern, patterns?
On page 3?
Page 3. I think the second sentence, areas around these communities have been designated to provide, should that be a for? For expansion of commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Four on--
Instead of or, it should be for.
The fourth line down--
Fourth line down, second word.
Fourth line down, second word. It should be four.
Yes, instead of or. So just add an F. And then the other ones that I see that I had little grammaticals have been, Kelly must have caught them.
Yeah.
So that was all I had.
You want a motion to approve?
Right, a motion to approve?
Yes.
Would love one.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I think we ought to thank Commissioner Wooster for going back through that and fly specking that, because that was a lot of work.
And then item number D6, so 11, or did we take care of that already?
I don't think so. I think--
December 5.
Oh, D5, I'm sorry. December 3rd minutes.
I thought we already took care of D5.
Not 5.
I thought we had an issue on 6.
I did, too. I thought 5 was one of the, was the group, because I abstained on 5.
I'm glad you tried to keep track of this.
We already took a motion on 1 and 6.
Well, I think that might have been a mistake, because I didn't have anything on 5, but I did have something on 6.
Right. That's, you had resource, resource production you had comments on.
Okay.
So--
So what 2 did you have an issue on?
I had an issue I needed to abstain on September 10th, which is 1, and also December 3rd, which is 5.
Okay. So I got those two confused, then, because I thought you said December 17th.
No, I might have. But I meant the 3rd. Do we need to take any other--
So we need to discuss this again. So we already took a motion on 1 and 5?
Yes, that was my--
Not 1 and 6?
Right.
That's what I thought we were doing, but I might have gotten confused.
Okay. All these minutes. So I think the only thing left is 5, is the minutes on 5.
But if we already voted on it, we need to make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
No, on 6.
No, on 6.
On 6.
Not on 5, because we just took the motion on 1 and 5. We had it backwards.
So the, a previous motion was made, was to approve 1 and 6, which were the, which were the ones I thought you had abstained from, but it was 1 and 5. So we need to rescind the motion to approve the minutes for 1 and 6, and then take a new motion to approve 1 and 5, which one would abstain from.
If you reconsider the motion on 1 and 6, and you withdraw it, then you had to add 1, 5, and 6, because now it's been unapproved. So you have to add it to be approved again.
Well, we need to go back, we need to discuss 6. I think there's some questions we had on 6. So we need to go back and discuss that still. So the first motion would be to rescind the action approving the minutes for 1 and 6.
Okay.
Or just 6.
Well, it was under one motion, so that--
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then there'd be a motion to approve the minutes of D1 and D5.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all abstain. Thank you.
Now we can discuss 6.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Parliamentary procedure.
So Commissioner Wooster, you had some comments on December 17th?
I just had one, and I think I brought this up earlier. It's on page 6. It's Policy RP 2.88, dealing with solar energy installations. And I had thought there was a suggestion to revise that, because it didn't seem to make too much sense the way it was written. And I don't know that it was actually approved. I think Peter has told us it was not. But I'll tell you what the suggestion was. It would read, "Solar energy installations shall be compatible with agricultural activities, and such facilities shall not be located on prime agricultural land and shall not reduce the production of the primary agricultural products." That was the suggestion was made earlier, and I would make it again. And that was it.
Okay. Need a discussion on?
Procedurally, I'm not sure we can do that under approval of the minutes. We would need to sort of reopen the discussion of the resource production element, make that change. And that would then be reflected in, you know, subsequent minutes.
Then that has to be re-agendized.
Right. So if it's Commissioner Wooster's desire to, we could approve these minutes, but then if you want to reopen the resource production element to discuss that one policy, we could, we could pull it back up for next meeting's agenda. We could put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Yeah. The sentence as it reads now doesn't make sense. Shall be compatible with agricultural activities, provided that such facilities are not located on prime agricultural land. Doesn't make any sense, to me. So on that basis alone, there needs to be reworking of the sentence. Right now, I'm trying to figure out whether or not Mr. Wooster's changes kind of correct that, the construction in that sense.
Kelly, did you go back and watch the video on that to come up?
No.
Okay.
Well, in any case, we, we wouldn't be able to sort of wordsmith it here.
You're right.
So we could go ahead and adopt the minutes, or approve the minutes, and then re-agendize this and come back.
We could bring it back. I mean, it's part of the general plan discussion, which is on next week's agenda.
Right.
We just add that to the list of things that we'll be discussing next week.
Right. Sound good?
Okay, so that means not approving the minutes.
No, we approved the minutes today.
Yes.
And then we'll just--
Because we can't add it, we can't change these.
Okay.
Because this is what happened.
Right.
The minutes just reflect the action that was taken. And that was, the action was taken, was to leave it the way it was. But we can go back, we can revisit that next week.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we are moving on to our public hearing, which is a continuing, our continued public hearing on the general plan.
Madam Chair, before you do, could I make a, just a very brief comment about the minute approval process? The minutes used to be available to the public, so they could follow what you were doing, so they could actually review what they said to see if they were consistent with what, what they had observed. That practice has changed. I'm not sure exactly when, but in the not-too-distant past. So I would like to request that either the draft minutes be posted on the website, so those who have participated in the process can review them ahead of the approval process, or that they be available to people who would like to read them. Because I think it's appropriate that they have the ability to comment, to see what kind of corrections are being proposed, and whether those corrections are consistent with what they observed.
I think the minutes are posted.
Are they?
Yeah. No?
Not until they're approved.
Um--
But aren't they part of our agenda packet when you go on the website and print it up? I've never put the minutes on there. I've been doing them eight years. And they, they weren't done before that.
They, they used to be.
They're not posted until they're approved.
Yeah. And I think the concern was that there would be confusion to the public, that they would think somehow these are the final minutes. But if they're clearly labeled draft, and they used to be available. So I think that's procedurally should be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll look into that and see if that's something that we need to be doing or required to do, or whether it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we are continuing our discussion of the conservation and open space element from, continued from January 14th. So I believe where we left off was on page 21, and that was beginning the discussion. We are in the implementation measures of scenic resources.
No, I think we're on the goal for policies still. Page 15.
Ah, okay.
We ended up air quality and greenhouse gases. And I know we're doing a little bit of back and forth between the implementation measures and the policies.
Great.
Just to help it clear, there were a number of changes that you directed me to make. I have not done those yet. I'm waiting until we finish the complete discussion of the document, and then we'll, I'll bring that back with all the changes that were, that were made. So we did receive, you know, several comment letters over the last couple of weeks, and those have all been forwarded to you. We received one last night from Muriel Zeller. I don't know if you had a chance to see that, that talked about the requirements of state law regarding the conservation of the space element, and the need to have a strong conservation program in place. Have some thoughts on you. Everything else be forwarded onto you that was received as part of the public comment package. So yeah, I think we just continue on where we left off, which would be the top of page 15. And then as we go through that, we'll, I'll make those changes. There was an issue brought up about the conservation open space map that I had provided the last meeting, and I'm still researching information as to other conservation easements. I've not corrected that yet either. So there was some information that seemed to be missing. I'm waiting to hear back from the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the Conservation Wildlife Board, as far as other conservation easements that they hold title to, to make sure that that map is complete. And I will be bringing that back when we bring back the revised element to you.
Thank you. Okay. So digging in, policy, goals and policy on scenic resources. Any comments, suggestions?
I'd like to start with a couple of questions.
Good.
Number one is, does the state law require this general plan to address, quote, scenic resources, end quote, as such?
Yes, it does.
And where is that?
It's in the government code. I don't know the actual section of the law, but I can look that up and see what specifically says.
Are you talking about 65302?
Yes. Actually, 65560 is, 65302, I believe, is the section that says you need to have an open space element consistent with, refers you to 65570, or 655 whatever the section is. And I should have brought that with me. I do not have it.
Are you looking for 65560?
Yes.
I have it.
Did I have it in the packet?
No, I have. I printed it off.
I don't know.
Would you like to look at it?
This is the sum total of the ordinance of the code.
We have also combined the scenic highway element, which is a mandated element. We've combined that with the conservation open space element, since in many ways are very similar. That is in the, the 65302 section of the government code, and--
Maybe you could just point that out. Kelly and I are both looking at the same page of some total of 65302 and 65560, which deals with open space. Is there a specific reference to scenic resources within that, I think is the question?
There is on-- While I'm looking at the general plan guidelines, the state general plan guidelines, and it does say, "Open space for outdoor recreation, including but not limited to areas of outstanding scenic, historical, and cultural value."
Those are the guidelines, though, not the statute.
Yes, those are the guidelines. Are you suggesting that we don't have any discussion of scenic resources, Commissioner Wooster? I guess that's where, is that where you're going?
I'd like to find out first of all if it's required, because it seems to me that scenic resources is just another name for land and water, oak woodlands, forests, and so forth, coming at it from a different perspective. And what this plan does, it deals with all of those things in other ways. And this is a kind of an overlay based upon what some people might think of scenic. And I need to find out whether this is necessary.
I think that the, and I'm sorry, I don't have the actual text of the law in front of me. The, the need to address scenic resources is, you know, evolved through the interpretation of the code, through the guidelines, and through court cases. One of the issues that we will have to address in the, in the EIR for the general plan are visual impacts, aesthetic impacts. And so to have policies within the general plan that addresses that assists us in identifying and mitigating scenic impacts, or impacts of scenic resources through the general plan EIR process. So while there may not be a specific, you know, line, "You must address scenic resources in your general plan," we have to do it in ways, sort of through the back door of the secret process. I don't think we can just say, "We don't need to do it." I think we have, we have to address scenic resources and the impact that our general plan, you know, policies will have on scenic resources. So to that degree, I believe that, yes, we do have to have something, and to consider scenic resources and the value they have to our community. And, yeah, there's-- And, yeah, there's some overlap. The reason we protect oak woodlands, for example, is that they provide wildlife habitat, they provide water recharge areas, they also provide scenic resources. So to say that we're adequately covered because we haven't addressed in another element, or we haven't addressed in another section, only partially addresses the need to look at the visual impacts of our planning process.
And I might just add, this actually is in the government code. The guidelines mimic the language in the code, which does say, "Open space for outdoor recreation, including but not limited to areas of outstanding scenic, historical, and cultural value." It is in the code.
And in the following section, you...
Was that what you were, your point of order was?
What Muriel sent you, did you get what Muriel sent you?
We, I didn't receive what Muriel sent.
She sent it last night, and in the following section, you're reading from 65560.
I am.
She also sent 65661, the very next section. The legislator, legislature finds and declares as follows that the preservation of open space land is defined, et cetera, et cetera, "Not only for the maintenance of the economy of the state, but also for the assurance of the continued availability of land for the production of food and fiber, for the enjoyment of scenic beauty, for recreation, and for the use of natural resources." So scenic beauty is 65561.a.
Yeah, I've got that as well, thank you so much for pointing that out, yeah.
Thank you.
You may not have six, I, I coughed, I printed this out if you'd like to see, 665, it's part of the code.
Okay, I'm looking at 65560a and B, B has six components to it, and the way I read it, Mr. Booster can chime in here, is that what the state intends is that in your open space element, you consider the scenic component, and historic, and elsewhere. Now you're giving us 65561, which is something I don't have a printout of. And again, it's referencing the open space, okay, a different element. So it says to me whether, what the, what the...
This is open space and conservation, they've been combined.
Conservation and open space, we call it.
Right.
We've combined the two requirements.
And I think this is consistent with what I was saying, is that when you preserve open space land, you do it for a number of reasons. And production of food and fiber is one, recreation's another, use of natural resources is another, scenic beauty is another. But what you're still doing is preserving open space land. That doesn't tell me you have to have a separate category of scenic resources. It does tell me that, yes indeed, you have to address open space. We all agree with that.
But it also says that we're supposed to address scenic resources as a separate, that does tell me it's a separate category that needs to be addressed on its own merit, not just as a byproduct of other...
Where does it say that?
Right here, it says, in the, you know, it says that we are supposed to address "Open space for outdoor recreation, including but not limited to areas of outstanding scenic, historical, and cultural value." Right there in the government code. 65560 subsection 3. We're not having the public comment period quite yet.
Oh, I wasn't going to make a public comment. I just wanted to read through to 65302, where do I mean that scenic beauty is, is in here for the general plan.
Thank you.
I just have, I can't agree with that, because it's saying you have to address open space for outdoor recreation, including but not limited to areas of outstanding scenic, historic, and cultural value. That doesn't require a separate scenic resources category. It may require a recreation, a look at recreation, which we also do.
So the, the way that we have organized the plan itself into various categories, various goals to address certain areas, is not something that's mandated by the state law. We have to address open space for a variety of reasons as listed there. Whether or not we have a goal and policy that specifically is titled scenic resources is something that we have created in the development of our draft general plan to focus on scenic resources. There is no mandate as to what we call these, and, you know, but I do believe that we need to address scenic resources in some way in our general plan. Whether we, whether we group those goals and policies under recreation resources, or we don't have any titles, and we just have them all listed as goals and policies, it doesn't really matter. This is more just sort of a helpful tool to organize the policies in ways that help understand, the reader to understand, oh, this is the goal that addresses scenic, scenic resources. We're getting at, do we have to have a section titled scenic resources? No, we don't. Do we have to address scenic resources? Yes, we do.
Second question. What is the effect on land use of creating an open space zoning district, or designating highways and roads as scenic?
I've got the same questions, which I assume we would get into when we, when we get into the element, you know, item by item. Those are the, those are the overarching questions that I have.
So the state and federal scenic highway, or even local scenic highway program, I'll address those separately because they're separate, several questions. Are programs that are established to identify scenic resources and use as a tool to enhance that? And the purpose is to facilitate tourism, and the, again, sort of the, the whole issue of enhancing the scenic quality of, you know, important scenic resources that the county has. The, the State Department of Transportation, Caltrans, worked with a county or a city to designate an area scenic highway. We have one designated state scenic highway, it's Highway 4, east of Arnold to the county line, actually continues on over into Alpine County. And that section of highway has also designated a scenic byway that is done through, essentially through the Forest Service. There are restrictions that are placed on the type of development that occurs within a designated scenic highway. For example, overhead power lines, signage. Unfortunately, there are no, there are no adopted standards for, by, at the state level of what is considered, you know, what is allowed and what's not allowed. The county then adopts standards that says, here's what we will, want to see in the way of property development to maintain that scenic character. It, it's sort of, almost like a reverse pornography kind of thing, where if it starts looking less scenic, then the state will, will, could potentially remove that scenic highway designation. And it's sort of, they will know it when they see it, kind of thing. But, but that's, you know, but the idea is to work with the community to establish what the community standards are for scenic quality. And there's some guidelines, but there's no like, you can only have certain amount of signage, you can't do this, you can't do that. That's not in the state guidelines.
It's in the national...
They're, they're in, they're more, they're sort of vague standards that they want to see. And that, but it's, again, it's the county's desire, the county petitions the state to have them designate a scenic highway, for the benefits that having that designation accrues to the county, attracting tourism primarily is the main benefit you get from that.
How does it do that? You designate a section of highway as scenic.
People that are traveling the country look for those routes, to say, well, you know, where do I want to go? Where, what's, what's a beautiful, you know, drive, or, you know, where do I want to go camping? And, oh, Highway 4 is scenic highway, it must be really nice up there, let's go check out Highway 4. That's conceivably the benefit.
Okay, this goes back to a question that I have, which is on the goal statement, referencing a tourism-based economic development. To what extent are we a tourism-based, to what extent is the, is our economy based upon tourism? Do we quantify that some, because we're going to emphasize it quite a bit, and we're going to potentially take some measures that, that address that. So to what extent is that, is our economy based upon that, based upon tourism? Because if you're going to lock up a lot of territory and say, "This is a, this is a scenic area," and you're going to restrict what's being done along that area for the benefit of tourism, it ought to be something that we really get a benefit out of. If, it certainly benefit tourism, but if tourism is a relatively small component of our econo, of our, of our economic base, then we're putting a lot of eggs into a basket that's not, that's not producing that much.
So...
Where can, where is that quantified somehow, so that we can, we can justify putting a lot of effort into supporting that component of our economy?
I can answer some of your questions, David. The National Scenic Highway Designation that we received, that runs from east of Arnold all the way through Alpine County and up and over Ebbets Pass, that was put into effect several years ago. There is a committee, it's the Ebbets Pass Scenic Byway that, that manages that scenic byway. There are a ton of restrictions in it, and there were many people opposed taking on that scenic highway designation, because it does, my office is in that scenic designation. And we were very concerned about signage, about restrictions that were going to be imposed on us when that came up. But it did pass. A lot, a lot of work went into getting that scenic designation, and our county accepted a lot of federal funds in taking that designation for improvements. The money went towards signs designating it as a national highway designation, it went into building bathrooms along the route, it went into a whole lot of stuff. So we have already obligated ourselves to that scenic highway designation, and it is something that is economically and tourism-based. So when people pull up, "Where are nationally designated scenic highways?", we are, are on that national map. There is actually a map that exists in this country for people to look for scenic highways that they're going to visit. And we are one of the few areas that do exist in that map. So we're obligated to continue that, we're already into this, we can't take it back.
No, no, no.
We also have the state designation, so we do have two tourism-based economic designations, which is the state and the federal designation. And I, you know, I'm listening to what you guys are saying, and I understand what you're saying, but we have those designations, we should be proud of those designations, because not everybody can get them. And we should be looking at pointing out to the state that we do have this open space designations that exist. We can't get out of them, we might as well get behind them, be proud of them, and they do bring tourism to our area, I have to admit that. So, I mean, I have real issues with a whole lot of these items under the goals and policies under this, this scenic resources, but I think that we can take what we have and expound on it and be proud of it, and, and say to the state, you know, we've complied with this section of our element, and we have state mandates that we have, have to meet. That's going to be one of them that we can say, "We've already done it."
There was nothing in my questions about existing designated areas, nothing.
Okay, so what is your specific question?
My, my only question is, if we expand on that, what are the, what are the implications?
Oh, the implications are horrible, you're locked into their guidelines, you're, and we've already got them.
So that's worthy, that's worthy of, we have them, and I'm not suggesting you're taking anything away, I'm just saying if we're going to add to it...
I'm not suggesting we add to it, I'm saying that we've already met this goal and policy, and we already have it in place.
I believe this component and the...
You specifically asked if it affected tourism and development, and my answer was, yes, people do come here because we're on national and state maps. That was your question.
Well, can I also just add and answer? In terms of economic development and significance of tourism in Calaveras County, it's very large, between, you know, the government, big part of the economic base, so is agriculture. Tourism is, there's not a lot of manufacturing going on here. Tourism is a significant contributor to the county's economy, and shouldn't be minimized, and should certainly be supported in any way we can.
I'm not trying to minimize it, I'm just trying to quantify it.
Right, well, it's big. Now, if we, you know, if we, if we wanted to say it's, you know, it's 30%, I don't know, but it's significant.
It is significant, I will agree with that comment, in my district, I don't know about yours, but, I mean, you've got, when you're looking at it, the economic base, you've got historic Murphy's, and then going on up the hill, you've got the historic scenic highways. And granted, maybe that in the foothills and the gold country, I mean, I still think there's a tourism value there as well.
I don't know what the numbers are, I'll try to see if I can track that down for the next meeting, and see what the quantified numbers are, how much of the economy is based on, on tourism activity. You know, there's a lot of overlap, you mentioned the wineries in Murphy's, well, that's also an agricultural component.
Correct.
But a lot of people come to Murphy's for wine tasting, and then move on up the hill to go to big trees, or go skiing, or you name it. There's, when they go, you know, water skiing at New Malones, when there's water in the reservoir, and then they'll spend the day wine tasting. So it's, it's, I think it's a fairly significant component of our economy. I don't know what the number is, I'll see if I can track that down for you.
Thank you.
The other question was, you had asked about scenic highway and...
A scenic zoning district.
Oh, open space zoning district.
Open space zoning district.
So an open space district, a zone, would be areas that have been specifically identified as a non, non-build, non-developal area. So if you were to do a large subdivision and you clustered a portion of the property, you could, that area that's, that's, the density has been removed from to allow for the clustering, would be zoned open space, so it's clear that that is, that the density has been removed off of that. That was one, one use of open space.
Well, wait a minute, you said an open space zoning district is for lands that you can't develop, clustering or no clustering?
So you have 100 acres zoned for one acre parcels, so you could have 100 lots. And you could carve that up into 100 one acre lots, or you could use 20 acres and put the 100 lots on 20 acres, and the remaining 80 left as open space.
No, I know, I know that the clustering concept...
To then show that that's been done, and that clustering has been done, that open space area is, is zoned open space, so that someone's not thinking, "Oh, I can go back in and redevelop that." That density's already been sort of transferred out through that project. There are multiple ways to do that, you could either rezone it open space, well, it's very clear, these are the open space areas that have been set aside for specific reasons, a part of that project, or it's an agency or an organization that has acquired land and for specific open space purposes, whether it's, you know, conservation of, you know, natural resources, or whatever reason, that someone says, you know, "We're setting this aside as open space, and we want to identify it as open space." That's the purpose of the open space zone.
Okay, so when, when you take this 100 acres and you, and you do the clustering that we just talked about, does, isn't the other 80 acres, by definition, locked up? Because all of the rights for development for that 80 acres has been confined to the 20, it's gone.
Correct. Correct.
So why do you need to then rezone the 80, give it a new designation?
You don't really need to. It's helpful in understanding, you know, for someone says, okay, where are open space areas? You look at the zone and see it. If you see an area that's all zoned, you know, one acre or one acre, whatever we call it, and you see 80 acres of that, that's all one large parcel, oh, that's something that could be subdivided in the future unless you know the history of, oh, that density was transferred off it. It's more of an identification purposes.
So in the scenic highways that go up the Highway four corridor, you think we need to add provisions in there for more open space when we're surrounded by national and state land and it's all open?
And I don't think that, I'm not sure why Commissioner Wooster linked those two issues in a single question, other than they were both on his mind. They're unrelated, is what I'm concerned.
Okay, because I'm like, wait a minute, there's so much open space. I don't know how much more open you're going to get, and it's locked.
Most of it is federally or state-owned land.
Correct.
The rest of it is probably mostly timberland under TPZ zoning. But there could be areas where an organization acquires land for the purposes of protecting natural habitat of some sort. And that could be something that would be appropriate to be zoned open space because the purpose of that property and the landowners that want it, this is red-legged fog habitat or whatever it might be, we're going to set aside 20 acres for habitat purposes or for recreation purposes or whatever the open space purpose in that long list of things. It's not something that county would go and rezone people's property. You're going to be open space unless there's something that's part of the landowner's desire to do that.
Just to put you guys at ease just a little bit, in that scenic byway, there is quite a bit of private land as well. They have not been restricted from building on their land. We have several new log cabin homes that have been built on the scenic highway that are private homes. So it has not affected those people being able to build their homes on their land. But they are surrounded by national and forest, so there's a ton of open space around those homes. And actually, the log homes are adding to that beautification process. They've done a good job of keeping that scenic mountain effect going. But they are not restricted from building on their private lands, so their rights have not been stomped on in that way. Now, a business going in that wanted to put up a sign that says, I opened a business, that might be an issue.
You're still allowed to have sign. It's probably going to be designed so that it's less intrusive than you might say, you know, some other part of the county. It blends in with the quality.
I agree.
And like I say, if it's a log cabin style building, then maybe a sign that's compatible with that style.
That seems to be what people have done along the scenic byway, is keep that mountain character look, and it looks really nice. But as far as them being able to build on their properties, and I know the concern is, what happens to the people's private land? I haven't seen any negative effect on that.
So I guess where we're at, at this point, is looking at this category called scenic resources and having it as its own separate section, just as we have identified other specific sections that address, you know, parts of the state code and guidelines. And in order to move this along, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of keeping a separate goal and policies for scenic resources.
I can see keeping it, but it's going to need a lot of rewriting because I think we've already met this goal and policy by providing for that. And I see some issues in a lot of the language on here that we need to discuss. So I'm not opposed to leaving this scenic resources in here because I think it is a viable resource in our county that we need to highlight and point out that we've got. But I, a lot of these goals and policies need completely reworking.
I am also not opposed to the component being included with the same, I have the same notes that Lisa has.
You do?
All right.
Same concern that it's a rework job, in my opinion.
So there's some consensus that we leave it in as a category, and so shall we get to work on your comments on it then?
Yep.
Okay. Starting with the goal.
So on the goal, Kelly, you want to start as usual?
Well. I don't really have a problem with the goal if we're going to be doing anything like this. I want to see how this plays out. We may have to come back and take another look at it, depending upon what's going to happen with the policies and implementation measures.
That's fair enough.
I have, my first comment starts at 4.1, so if you want to pass on me for now, that's fine.
So when I'm looking at the goal, I'm going to say I want to remove the word private because I don't think we need to just protect the private property rights of that area. I think we need to protect all the property rights in that area.
Well, you know, I'm in favor of that.
Well, it's about time you and I agreed, huh?
I have it on my list here, too.
Okay, so that would be my one change on the goal.
And then I would suggest, since we have, we don't say a county with the other, is that we just start with abundant scenic resources.
I like pointing out that we are a county because not all counties can say that, and we're one that can.
Well, I mean, to be consistent with the other ones, and you could also say, you could say a county with a high-quality system of recreational facilities. It's not a big deal to me.
I think technically Fawn is correct. Consistent with the structure of all the other components, it starts, it's a funny sort of construction.
So it would say abundant scenic resources that preserves rural character, quality of life, and tourism-based economic development while acknowledging, while protecting property rights. Period.
Okay, I'm good.
Bye.
All right, moving to the policies.
Well, 4.1 says we're going to conserve natural and historic landscapes and important landmarks as scenic resources, important to the county's rural character, scenic beauty, and tourism-based economic development. It seems to me that anything could be, anything that's not already built on could be called a natural landscape for openers. And so I really don't understand what this is trying to do. Because if it's saying what it's, the literal reading of it means to me, it means if you have a natural, meaning not built-on landscape, you're going to conserve it, which I guess means you're not going to do anything with it. And historic landscapes, everything in this county is historic in a sense.
It's certainly not the intent that you can't do anything with vacant land. I think that, you know, and if there's a way that we can rephrase this so that the big picture is that we're not going to pave over the whole county. That we have, you know, natural and historic landscapes that are important to the county's economic development and its rural character that draws people to this county, either for recreation or for moving here. We've got areas that are developed for communities. We've identified areas that, you know, we want to expand those communities. But we also have areas that are not appropriate for urban development. And it's an important aspect of this county is that those natural landscapes are conserved, not preserved, but conserved. That there is, you know, they're utilized and maintained, but doesn't mean that you can't build anything new. But in designing new projects, you look at, what's the effect? What's the visual effect of this project? Is it, sure, it's going to change, but are there aspects of the land that maybe that ridge line shouldn't be lined with houses? Maybe that ridge line is part of the open space component of that project and the houses are clustered in the valley area of the project site? Or that the design of the buildings themselves blend in more with the terrain? I don't think this policy is, would ever be considered, you know, restrictive to the point where you can't develop land.
So.
But it's looking at the broad, the big picture of how we develop our county.
Instead of just starting out with conserve because that word causes panic in a lot of people, maybe we put encourage conserving our natural and historic landscapes and important landmarks as scenic resources, important to the county? And then I see scenic byways is scratched. Could we keep that in? Is there a reason that you specifically scratched those words because we've covered them elsewhere?
Maybe it's in 4.2?
Well, we had a long list of forest lands, ranch lands, oak woodlands, scenic byways, rivers, lakes, reservoirs, et cetera, et cetera. I think that the natural and historic, my intent was that natural and historic landscapes phrase sort of covers all that.
Okay.
Rancins and oak woodlands and, you know, rivers are part of the natural landscape. The ranch lands are part of the historic landscape. So these landscapes are important to the county and its citizens.
I agree with scratching those out because those are details that are addressed in the implementation measures, which is where I have most of my issues. I think Lisa makes a good point that if you just encourage the conservation of at the start, it'd be a little bit more sense. But again, most of my issues with, all of my issues with 4.1 are in the implementation measures. Those are largely questions that may lead somewhere, but.
And I'm in favor of that, Elisa's.
That suggested language, encourage the conservation of.
Yes, and I would just, I would add, instead of tourism-based economic development, put tourism-based economy. So encourage the preservation of natural and historic landscapes and important landmarks, scenic resources, important to the county's rural character, scenic beauty, and tourism-based economy. Does that work?
Why would you take the word development out?
Well, economic development is a practice.
Maybe a component of the economy.
Yeah, it's a practice. I mean, it's a way you, you know, you, there are strategies for a community or county or an entity to use to increase, to, you know, to change their economy.
So you just want to change it to economy instead of economic development?
Yes. We have an economy. We might practice economic development to change that economy.
Consensus on that?
Yeah.
With that change, I'm fine.
Okay.
What's the first part?
Encourage.
You added something. I added the word encourage.
The preservation, or encourage the conservation of.
I have that written down.
Yeah.
We're making sure our notes are good this time.
So you got it now, Annette?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to 4.2.
It sounds to me like that's required anyway.
Well, it is, but the language here is kind of tricky for me because maintain scenic resources along does it, okay, that are visible. Okay, you took care of it. Never mind. You already scratched that are visible from. I'm good.
All right, any, shall we move to 4.3?
Okay.
Yes. This looks a lot like one we've seen before. We had a, and there's an implementation measure that follows this, too. We had a proposed policy in land use that read, adopt the hillside management ordinance establishing acceptable hillside slope-related densities and alternatives for hillside construction that reduce grading and extreme physical alterations to topography. And that was in the land use element.
How did that element start out in land use?
It read, adopt a hillside management ordinance establishing acceptable hillside slope-related densities, et cetera. And the commission determined to take that out. And this is coming back at the same thing. We're going to tell people if it's a prominent slope exposure, you have to minimize development on it. You know, you either put something on it or you don't. And so I'm not in favor of this or the implementation measure that follows it.
I have a very similar problem with it, although I didn't cite the land use element that Commissioner Wooster just mentioned. We have discussed clustering elsewhere, again, in the land use element, as something, as an alternative, as a tool. You can do this and it'll help you use this piece of land for the densities that it was otherwise designated, and you can crowd them over here and leave the rest of it open, as we discussed a few minutes ago. So that was, it's an alternative. It's a tool that you can use to help you get your project through. This language here sounds more like it's being forced, as it means, to preserve what somebody views is a view, a valuable view. So where it was, where it was an option before, now it's, now it looks to me like it's becoming a requirement.
Well, it is already a requirement by the state. You can't build on slopes that are past a certain percentage grade already. For CAL FIRE reasons, they need to be able to get their trucks up and down those slopes. And if they can't, then the state has, already has guidelines against that.
Wherever the building code shows that a slope is too steep for a structure, that's fine, but that doesn't need to be in the general plan. It's in the building code.
This is really addressing, I think, the development on hilltops. Remember, we're in scenic resources. So it's like seeing, you know, you look at this beautiful hill and there's just house after house right on the top of it. Whereas if there were some consideration for setting the house back further away from the visual line, not having it plopped right on the top, that's what this policy is addressing.
And it doesn't say prohibit, it's minimized.
Yes.
What Lisa's talking about. Lisa's talking about something else. This says that we're going to decide, somebody's going to decide, what is a prominent slope exposure? Prominent in what sense? Prominent because it looks pretty?
Scenic, yes.
It has some scenic component to it, and then you've got the ridge lines and the bluffs and whatnot. So there's a lot of judgment calls that go into this. It's not a building code issue. It's a.
Right, right. And that's part of the discretionary process when someone does a subdivision, you know, project. We would look at this, and if this policy stays, then when someone comes in with their subdivision, we would look at that, say, well, this is important to the county. And so we want to make sure that when you design it, that you're not, in order to meet the fire safe requirements of building a road that doesn't exceed a certain, you know, you're not bulldozing, you know, huge, big cut and fill slopes to get a road up to the top of the hillside. You're minimizing that.
This is.
It doesn't mean you're prohibiting it. It's just, it's a design directive given to the county, given to the decision makers so that when an applicant says, see, I want to do what Fawn just was saying she would not like to see. And the person says, well, our policies, we really don't want to see that. You can still get your X number of lots, but we want you to redesign your project so that it fits with our sense of design criteria. That's what this policy would do.
This isn't a policy that was in the general plan that was brought down to us. It looks like it was an addition to the policies.
This was something that was suggested by the public comment.
I'd rather strike it. I think it's got too many. I think it's got too many implications into it. It's not, it's not, to me, shouldn't, should not be under scenic resources. I, we've addressed this multiple times throughout this element, and I would strike it out of the scenic resource.
Inasmuch as it was an added component, to what extent were IMs 4A, 4C, and 4D added? Or were they already there? They look like they were already there.
Pretty sure they were already there.
They might have applied a policy to them.
I'm looking ahead to the implementation measures.
See, those are all things I have notes on. That was one portion that I didn't like.
So those were prior implementation measures?
They were already there.
Yeah.
I don't mind 4A.
Can you recall the comment note that this flowed from? What the issue was that they were concerned with?
I don't. It was, it was one of many, many comments that we received, particularly relating to this, this element. And it was just suggested, I don't know who, I don't remember who made the suggestion, and I thought, I think there's some validity to that, so that's why I added it for your consideration.
It seems like we've addressed it, though, in other portions of the element. We've been over that. I mean, it's like...
And I don't think so. I mean, I think it's especially important here, given the fact that we took out the broader hillside management policy out of the land use element. I mean, we are, this would be directed and focused specifically on the preservation, the maintenance of our scenic resources from, you know, new development. And again, talking about tourism and the visitor industry, don't have a percentage, but it's significant. But I would, let me just finish. I would say that visually, as well as the experience that we provide visitors, is, that's really what we have going for us. And if we don't protect our best shot at economic development and a strategy for that development being tourism and the visitor industry and all of the jobs and the revenue that that industry produces, you know, all that's going to be compromised. So allowing development that jeopardizes people's experience when they come here, they're not going to come here anymore.
Well...
But we've already, it's, we're already saying we're going to maintain those scenic resources, and we're going to encourage conservation of, and this goes into a building code issue instead of a resource.
Not necessarily. It's more of a policy, Lisa. It gives the planning department the flexibility when there is a new development proposed to say, you know, our county, scenic resources are important to us. And, you know, we'd love to have your subdivision here, we'd love to have your development here, and we want to make sure that you're going to contribute to our economy and our economic base, which is tourism, coming here, that they're not going to come and look at a, you know, cookie cutter subdivision on top of a hill.
Two things. First of all, I would like to revisit the land use element that we cut that speaks to this issue, because if we deleted it from the land use element, why would we want to plop it back in? Why would we be in favor of it being plopped back in?
Well, that was a specific implementation measure.
Correct.
That was adopting an ordinance, a hillside ordinance, which is different.
This reads as an implementation measure. You're going to protect scenic resources by minimizing grading. That really reads more like an implementation measure than a goal.
I would disagree. I would, I'd say that the implementation measure would be exactly what was deleted from the land use element, where you're actually adopting a specific ordinance. This gives us policy guidance. We want, we want to minimize the grading. We didn't say how we're going to do it, but we sort of know what we don't want to see is, we've seen those sort of stair step grading of hillsides where, you know, the entire hillside has been graded to accommodate pads for housing. You know, is that the kind of design we want to see? No.
Doesn't that sound like an implementation measure to you? How are you going to preserve the hillside by discouraging such and such type of development?
Because you have to have the overall policy in place to say, we want to minimize or protect, or whatever the word you want to say, our hillsides. You know, that these steep slopes, the bluffs, the ridge lines contribute to the scenic quality of the county. And where someone has land they want to develop, minimizes the servants of that area. You can still get your development, but to me, minimize is a very broad, open-ended term. It doesn't say you can't do it, but let's see if you can get your design in there so that it reduces the amount of grading that occurs on those hillsides.
How is that not encouraging the conservation of, including natural and historic landscapes?
I would say it just gives a little more guidance on that specific issue.
Correct. It's an implementation toward that, aimed at that.
Well, I think we're not communicating on what we see in, to me, an implementation measure is a specific action the county's going to do. We're going to adopt an ordinance, we're going to work with another agency, we're going to, a specific item that we're going to do. This says, you know, provides the policy guidance. We may not want to actually have an ordinance that says, you know, we're going to, we're going to adopt a hillside ordinance. But when we look at projects, this is still some policy guidance that planning staff, as well as the public works department, and you and the board of supervisors will have when you say, gee, we think this project fits with our county, or no, we don't.
And the implementation measure is, you know, D4, 4D, which is adopting construction guidelines for hillside. That's a specific action in support of this policy.
Well, guidelines, are they going to be mandatory or not? In this implementation measure?
Well, guidelines are guidelines. They're typically not mandatory. An ordinance would be mandatory, or standards would be mandatory.
You say the guidelines, not ordinances.
Right, that's what the...
This says guidelines, not an ordinance. What was stricken in the land use was an ordinance, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
But the guidelines have to address minimizing grading, and so that answers your question.
But the guidelines, here is, here is what we would like to see. It's sort of like the guidelines we have for construction in McCallum Hill. There are design guidelines that says, here's, here's the things that we've found to be acceptable, we would like to see. We're not requiring it, but gee, if you want to, you know, make sure you fit in well with our community and don't piss off all the neighbors, build us something like this.
Well, okay. What is it? How much extra hassle is it for a person who wants to do something to buck a guideline? Do we say, okay, if you don't want to do it, you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it, you're free to go? Or do we cause them all kinds of problems somewhere? And let me give you an example. If I own this, a piece of property with this nice ridgeline or a hill or something like that, that's the place you want to put something because that's where the person has the view. If you've got view property, you don't want to put your house at the bottom of it where you're looking up, you want to put your house at the top where you're looking down. I mean, that's what a lot of people want. They want the house with the view. That's the whole point of the piece of property as far as its development potential. So you take that away, either in the form of a guideline which becomes some, something more than that. You follow me?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Okay? That's, that's really the value of the piece of property. If you're taking it away from the owner in some way through a policy, that's a, we're getting real close to a taking here.
Well, not to mention the fact, you get the breeze on top of the hillsides, and it's not as hot in the summer or cold in the winter.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing, I mean, and this would apply towards discretionary development where someone's doing a subdivision, not someone building a house. Obviously, there's nothing here that would prevent someone who owns a piece of property on a ridgeline to build a house on a ridgeline. That's a ministerial act. There's, that's not subject to review by the general plan. If someone had acreage and they were subdividing it, that's where these policies and the guidelines would come into play. Can you design it so that it's not as visually intrusive as carving up the hillside, plopping houses all over the ridgeline? It may not be to the best financial advantage of the property owner, but they still get their development, and they still, at the same time, it's addressing the larger community needs, which is what the purpose of the general plan is.
Which would also be protecting adjacent property owners' rights. For example, if you have the subdivision and it's next to a vineyard with wine tasting, you know, the, people don't want to go wine taste and look at the beautiful mountainside with a bunch of pads of houses on the top of it.
Those are gorgeous houses. I don't know why not. I mean, that's...
Well, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
And it is.
Then that's, that's a challenge with something like this, that we all have a little different concept of what we think is visually attractive.
So you're saying that it's, it would be only for developments that are discretionary, meaning there's a zone change involved?
Well, it may not be a zone change, but there may be a subdivision map, some discretionary action.
Well, for example, if you wanted to take land out of resource production where it would be currently designated in order to put two houses on top of a ridge, that would be a discretionary development, wouldn't it?
A zone change, how do you parse a map as discretionary? Yes.
Even one house?
No. You've got land right now that, there's a piece of property, you can build a house on it. There's no discretion involved in that.
But if I wanted to build two or three houses, then there's discretion on that, and what you're doing is telling me that my land has no value for that because somebody visually sees my houses as ugly. So we're making rules based on a visual from somebody else that doesn't own the land or even live nearby, they're just traveling through. I don't think that's fair.
Well, I have to say, I mean, I don't particularly like the looks of people's houses on top of hilltops either, but it's their hilltop. And what we're really doing here in terms of economics, it seems to me, or what we're being asked to do, is we're going to control people's land use in a way that the county perceives will look good to visitors, who hopefully will come in greater numbers and perhaps spend money at places that scare the tourists. And so it controls what the people who own this land can do with it to benefit others who don't own it, but might make money off it.
And hopefully the tourists will spend more money creating more sales tax revenue than the property tax revenues that you would get from the developer.
And I would argue it's not just tourists, it's also people who live here. You know, I think granted, a lot of us moved here because of the scenic value that this county has.
So if you own an entire hillside, I would say you have a lot of open space going on around it. That would be, I mean, you're building up on the hillside, you're clustering up there and you've left the entire hillside so that the person that lives next to it can visually look at a blank hillside. It's nice and clean and open.
What that means is the people who are already here that got to build on the hillsides get to keep them. The people who moved here because of the open hillsides get to say, that's it, we're shutting the door.
Or just to minimize. It's not shutting the door. But in order, just to keep this moving along, you know, it seems like there's some consensus about action on 4.3, so, you know, can we...
Mike, my view would be to not have it.
I would support that, and then, but we still have some implementation measures that we're going to butt up against because they were already there and they happen to support this. But I want to, I would leave with the notion that when we talk about this as being only with, only, only affecting discretionary development, discretionary development could be as few as two dwellings.
A parcel map is a discretionary development, that's correct.
All of the implementations on 4.3 exist in 4.2 and 1, so we're still going to come across those when we get to implementation. They've been double, triple referenced in some of these cases.
So there's some consensus about just deleting?
I'd like to delete it.
4.3?
Likewise. I, I don't see any reason for it.
Okay. All right, well, before we move to recreation resources, you want to take a short break and then we'll open it up to the public for some discussion?
I'd be a lot of discussion on that one.
So we'll take just like a, you know, seven minute, eight minute break? Eight minutes? Seven and a half?
Discretion. Seven and a half.
About, how about 10:35? That's eight minutes. Who would like to discuss and provide input on the goals and policy section of the scenic resources, section of the conservation and open space element? Now would be your time, and I am going to keep you to five minutes maximum. Got my clock right here.
Well, I might as well go fast. Go first, why not? Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com. Just want to support retaining this section for scenic resources and scenic beauty, as it does say in the code, the preservation of open space land for the enjoyment of scenic beauty. That is part of our state code, so I think it's very important, it deserves its own section there. People move here, live here, work here, stay, play here because of the beauty of this county. That's what keeps us here. So I think anything we can do that doesn't restrict rights too much but does preserve what we have is worth exploring here. The 4.3 that you are thinking about deleting, I'm really puzzled why you would do that because I don't think it's as restrictive as you think it is. It's actually very flexible. I live on a hill, and other people I know live on a hill, and our properties were developed to minimize their impact on that hill. My house, you can't see, even though it's on top of the hill, you can't see it from anywhere. It was, there was very minimal grading done. It's a low one-story house. All of the trees and the vegetation were left around it. Any other buildings were built low. As the implementation guidelines say here, minimize grading and topographical alteration that was done with the property, you can't even see hardly what's going on there. Vegetation retention, blending new construction with the surrounding hillsides and hilltops, you know, designed so it's not visually intrusive. So my interpretation of that goal and policy would be that it is not restrictive, it's a guideline, and as Peter said, anyway, one house at a time, it doesn't apply. You're talking about a parcel map or a subdivision, and even at that point, I think you could comply with this without any problem and would contribute to the overall goal of keeping the county a scenic resource. So I would hate to see you get rid of that policy because I think that is not as restrictive as you think it might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Make sure you sign in.
Miki Williamson. I live in, between Murphys and Angels. Just two comments that were raised during the discussion. I think it's important to emphasize scenic resources because when we first started the general plan public update process, those early meetings that were attended by literally hundreds of people in the county, every single one of them, the top thing that people wanted to see preserved was the rural character of the county. And that was across the board. It didn't matter if they were people who were in the property rights camp or the environmental camp. People want to see the rural character of this county preserved. People want to see the rural character of this county preserved. So I just want to emphasize that. And you were talking about whether or not this is a tourist-based economy. And I just came across in the profile that was created by the economic development company, company, right, Dave Haley and folks. And it says on page, tourism in Calaveras County, tourism is Calaveras County's largest industry by far, exceeding second place agriculture by seven times. So if we're talking about what we want to see to bring money into the county, we're not going to be able to ignore tourism. So.
Thank you.
This conversation seems to be reminiscent of one that we had not too long ago in the general plan discussions. And when you start trying to put definitions on scenic, if you ask 10 people what is scenic, you can get 10 different answers. First of all, it is not my responsibility to buy property to preserve someone's scenic view. It is my right to buy the property and develop it the way I'd like it. So as diverse as Calaveras County is, from almost sea level to the mile-high country, when I go down the hill, I see the rolling hills and a house on top of it. Well, maybe they like the scenery, maybe they can keep an eye on their cattle. But are we now going to force them to build below the hill and force them into a flood zone where they have no alternative to building and having expensive insurance and everything else? No. You know, when you get further up the hill and the discussion about the scenic byway, again, what does scenic mean? You know, half of that byway is nothing but a tunnel that you drive through, and it's a fire hazard. When you get up above Miko Drive, they've cleared the forest and opened it up. That's scenic to me. You know, you can actually walk out into the forest, and that's what we hope tourists do, is they can stop, have a picnic, go to the store, do the things that they want, get used to Calaveras County, and maybe come up here more often. When you get in areas that haven't been cleared, that have been set aside and frozen, well, the improvement is frozen, but not the growth of the trees. You can't walk through there. You know, you couldn't, a goat couldn't get through that country. That's not scenic to me. So I think, you know, encouraging is one thing, but you know, there's so many overlapping and contradictory wheels, gears that are connected here. I think you're getting yourself in a position where there's really nothing you can do. It's going to violate something or it's going to offend somebody. You know, it's still your land, you bought it for a reason, and as long as you're not violating some state law or really making a mess of it, you should be able to do what you want. Build on the top of the hill if you want, that's fine. If you want to build on the shadow of the hill, that's fine too. But it shouldn't be encouraged in a code because when you go for your building permit, what does encouraged mean when you get to the building department? It should just be, this is what I want to do, here's the reason why, and do it. You know, if you want to have hearings about it, you know, it's like anything else, you can notify the neighbors, you know, they can say something about it, but it's still your property. And trying to codify values is mission impossible. So I hope you take that into consideration, leave it as open as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, when I read through this, my comments were to take out 4.3, just reading it. And then, sitting here and listening to Mr. Wooster, Mr. Toono, and Ms...
Lisa.
Lisa. I am in 100% agreement with what you just said. That's how, when I read it, that's how I felt, that's how, what I'm visualizing as a citizen, that this is just another way to control people's private property. And my question was, who decides what scenic is? Very subjective. You know, and I say, how did this county get to where it is today? It's a rural county, it's a beautiful county, we moved here for that reason. No, I can't imagine anybody coming up here and wanting to ruin that. I see people coming up and enhancing it. I see people that, yes, they might build a home on a ridge because that's their property and they want this gorgeous view. Why not? I'd love that too. I can't afford it, but you know, somebody can. There's a lot of homes that are built on the tops of hills. If you go over to Lake New Maloney's and you drive down the one road that goes into Maloney's, there's a lot of homes on those hills that are just gorgeous and they put great vines in their properties. Again, so it's a subjective view of what is scenic. So I guess I just want to say that in this section, I think you're in the right track. I think it does need to be eliminated. A lot of this stuff happens when people go through a process of getting their permitting. And I agree with Mr. McManus that we should be open to letting people build what they want and not put so many roadblocks. I mean, this is already known. I meet people that say, oh yeah, I've had property in Calaveras County for 40 years and I've given up because you can't develop anything there. And it's a sad statement because we just lock up everybody's property. So anyway, I just want to encourage you to keep on that track, eliminate that part of the, and we have to think in that broad term. And you know what? A lot of this, I understand in the future, it's going to be whoever sits in these seats, whoever sits in our supervisor's seats, whoever is our planning director, is going to make determinations based on all this. So I guess I just say, we always have to be sure that we have people who look at things with logic and common sense. If we get people in who want to use all of this against us as people, you know, we're just setting them up for it. So I appreciate your work. You guys are doing a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Al Segalat, Taxpayer Association. Well, I concur with the last two speakers regarding the dropping that clause. But looking deeper and further ahead, we are actually in doing so, following the Constitution of the State of California, Article 1, Section 1, which gives some pretty clear indication that the state recognizes individual rights, life, liberty, and property. And so does the U.S. Constitution in its Fifth Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment. So you're in pretty solid ground when we have a situation where government or even a group of people want to determine what other people can do with their land and use the force of government to do so. Now, the word encourage is, and using it in a sense of police power, what does that mean? You're going to encourage by taking tax money and give it to somebody? That's encouragement. Are you going to encourage somebody not to do something by banning them from using their property or making it so expensive that they can't, they can't use it? Well, that's encouragement. So the most important thing is to respect the individual rights of people. And it is true that if our county continues to be popular, and I think it'd be more so by the nature and character of our people, because we're good people and we're fun to be around, than in nature itself. Nature's always going to be there. And sometimes a home can be a very beautiful thing on a ridge top or on a hilltop. So while it might be a dream that we could preserve our county and keep it rural, we cannot do that using the force of government without violating the individual rights of people, their property rights. Incidentally, the term personal property rights, in a legal sense, refers to chattel, private property, non-real estate property, personal property. You have two types of property, you have personal property and real estate. So when you ever see the term personal property, usually the person is, means that personally own real estate, but the actual meaning of the word is non-real estate property. So in looking ahead, we need to find ways to word this, to try to conform to state the wishes of the legislature, which sometimes do not conform to the constitution, while at the same time protecting the rights of our citizens. And you're doing a wonderful job at doing this. The only thing that our taxpayer group can encourage is to find a way to maybe define property rights at the goal section. And then when things come up that looks like they're going to violate individual rights, refer in that part of it back to the first part that defines what the property rights are. So it's really clear. And then when it's clear, then you'll find that you'll have economic development, actually you'll have development, and you'll have prosperity because people are secure in what they can do with their property.
You have a minute left, Mr. Segalat.
One minute left or one second?
One minute.
Oh, okay.
Not one second.
Anyway, so essentially, I do appreciate the comments of previous speakers and the work you're doing. And when this dust is all settled, we might have a general plan that respects the individual rights of citizens of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Anthony Wooster and I'm from McCollumie Hill. And yesterday I was looking from Highway 26 toward 49, and I noticed there were some, there were some old houses, like one house on a little hill, and then there's another little hill and this little house on top. It looks really nice. It's very, very scenic. If you had 1,000 homes on that hill, I don't think it would be scenic anymore. So I understand the problem that you are dealing with. The implementation measure, 4.3, COS 4.3, I thought we actually were putting a implementation measure into the, into the policy. So when we say clustering on the visible portions of hillside sites, actually, that's like, that's actually an implementation measure for the policy of minimizing grading and development on prominent slope exposures, ridge lines, and bluffs, as I see it. And one of the reasons you would want to minimize grading and development on prominent slope exposures, ridge lines, and bluffs is not just for the scenic beauty, it's also for stormwater. So we would want to minimize grading and development on a slope. So I'm just tossing that out, okay? As I was going through the implementation measures, I went back to the code 65302, the California code. And it says, "The GP shall consist of a statement of development policies and shall include a diagram or diagrams and text setting forth objectives, principles, standards, and plan proposals." And I think the standards are in there as a way of letting people know what they can do. So if we have a developer who'd like to come to Calaveras County, it would be really nice if the general plan would clearly indicate where his type of proposed development would be welcome. What standards would have to be followed? What would have to be done? And I think one example of this might be your stormwater management standards. Update existing standards for new development to offset cumulative direct and indirect impacts of runoff from individual projects and their subsequent contribution to increase stormwater, flood hazards, and county drainage systems. And I think what you might want is something like, that the developer would need to provide a drainage study that recommends improvements that reduce future stormwater runoff volume to the existing runoff volume of the land as it is now. Might be, that might be what you want to do. And then you might want the developer to do either a retention basin or a detention basin in the development, so that it doesn't negatively impact the neighbors. In other words, with all the new roads and asphalt parking lots, you're going to have more runoff. So you don't want to negatively impact the people around you. So what I'm seeing here is I don't really see a lot in the way of standards. What I do see is that the poor planning department and public works departments are really going to need more staff in order to develop all of the things that are in the implementation, for them to write up something new for the zoning.
Anthony, you have about a minute left too.
Okay. I'm almost done.
Good. Thank you.
I don't know if the county has the money, or the staff, or the money to provide new staff in order to do everything that is in the implementation measures. And that's just for open space. I was really appalled. I thought, this is a lot of work that they are taking on and the responsible party is planning, building, and public works, for instance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Some of the commissioners are, I don't know, are excellent in questioning, parsing, asking questions that then seem to lead to implications that are truly frightening, where a person can't develop their land at all. And I don't think that's true. I think the general sense of this 4.3 section is, it's an effort to provide some tools for the planning department to enter into a dialogue with those who plan a development, something other than a single house, or something other than current land use designations and zoning allows, and enter into a process, and that's a healthy process. Minimize does not say you can't do it, but it does say that, hey, the county, the people of the county, and I think they've expressed this very well, value other things and have other, there is a greater public interest in not defeating the best attributes and virtues of the county, which drive the economic engine. And I think this is an attempt to reflect that. It's not an absolute, it's not preventative, but it allows a process to go forward where a development, a developer can be questioned, suggestions can be made, and if he or she doesn't agree, they can say that and they can even win the day on that. But as an expression of a general interest and value of the county, I think it's wonderful. The other implication of it is that private property rights sow trump those greater public interests that they can take off a hillside. interests that they can take off a hillside or a mountaintop and develop in ways that clearly, in a sense, are not in the long-term interests of the people who live here or the long-term economic interests of the county. I think this is relatively innocuous, it is not frightening, and I would hope you would reconsider and retain it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Race from Janelin, and I'm one of those lucky people that live on the top of a hill, 750-foot elevation. The Calaveras River is 250 feet below me. Luckily, I have a good neighbor, my baby sister, 35, 40 feet from my house, but good enough to go over for coffee. But that's the sideline for mine. I enjoy it, because I lived in Livermore, five feet one side, 10 foot the other side. Lived in Discovery Bay, that was an improvement, five foot one side, 10 foot on the other side, but I had the whole delta to me. But it got so damn crowded, I boogied out of there. Took me two years to find that property. When I walked to my property, I look west, I see Monte Diablo, and everything between my house and me. I come down to my house, which I built below, next to the road, like all the neighbors did. I don't want to look in their yard. I got wonderful neighbors. Once a year, when we get for Christmas, that's wonderful. The point I'm making is, I know it was going to cost me extra. I don't have rocks, I got boulders. And I built my own house, and I built a design that fit my need. I got a geodesic dome. I was lucky enough to book myself full, it was my design professor. I did it, it's more expensive, but I made it okay, because I had the wind during the summertime, from north to east, I don't need air conditioning. The only danger I have is the 500-year flood, and there was mention of 500-year flood in what FEMA scam we're here, we're having over the border super. 500-year flood. If we get 500-year flood, I can park my boat in front of my house. The bottom line is, I like Picasso, some people like Rembrandt. Beauty is an eye of beholder. I'm willing to pay the extra cost to the only people I see is the one I want to see. But I all fully realize that across the river, one of these days, when it's really warm, it's somebody's going to build a house out there, and they will have a right, I accept it. Right now, if I don't like my neighbors, I will put some long, tall, evergreen trees up there. The biggest industry in this county, folks, is this building. And people come up with numbers, the biggest employer, the biggest expense, and the biggest money is this county, the administration of this damn county. And where did it get you? And it's not all the county's fault, this is some, well, the Roman nude that's coming down from Sacramento, every weekend they change their minds. I don't care about the park laws, or roads, whatever. Most of us are adults, and I don't believe I have the right to tell my neighbor what kind of house he should build. If I don't like his house, I put up evergreen. And he's not going to see me, and I don't want to see him, if I had a bad neighbor. I got wonderful neighbors, I always said wonderful neighbors. But it's my money, it's my property, and I don't intend to do what my home to please anybody else. If they have a problem but what I'm building, go to small claim court, show me your damages. My values are not exactly like everybody's else, but I do respect their values, what they do on their property. And this, oh, it's not a big deal, as some folks say. It's not a big deal, get this damn thing out of there, if it's not a big deal. I know my values, and I respect your values, but don't force your values on me. I'm over 18, I know what I like and what I don't like, and I'm not too bashful to express it. So, you know, it comes up, this county, you want open space? I'm sure Peter can tell you, what's the residence to the total acreage of this county? That's open space when you get those numbers. How much more open space you want? The feds pushing people out from visiting the federal lands, the forests and stuff, they're discouraging.
Mr. Race, you've got a minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, folks, I haven't come across too many people who are going to tell me what I like and what I don't like. And I'm one of those idiots that I find a way around it and make it hard for them. Got a long memory, and so on. Cal Fire tell you where you should live? I haven't heard Cal Fire talk about, because maybe too busy bailing out the chief of the Cal Fire, the guy who's got busted. Or, well, Cal Fire's not in the building department. What they like, what they don't like, when they so concerned about what I like, then it come to me. Take a look at how well Cal Fire doing the building code up in the hills afterwards. Guidelines, values, put a dollar sign next to it. I would love to see. Tourist is the biggest industry in this county.
Thank you, Mr. Race.
Show me the numbers.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Garibaldi, I live on Highway 26 in the Butte Fire area. Have you, any of you folks been burned out in the Butte Fire? Well, it's not very scenic now. There's 70,000 acres that were burnt, and I'm hearing scenic area talk here. When we're burned out, and I'm hearing you restricting us to build on top of the hill now, and I don't like that. I think looking at a house upon the house on the hill is beautiful. I think it's a very beautiful scene, seeing a house on top of the hill. And I don't know why you're thinking that it's not scenic. And my dad built down below next to the highway because it was the cheapest way to go, and we were cold all the time on the north side. And if my dad only built up on top of the hill, we would have had the wind and the warmth of our property. Now we're totaled out, but maybe I can build up on that. Are you going to stop me from building on top of the hill? It sounds like you're trying to. I'm a property rights advocate. When we bought our property in 1941, it was five-acre zone. Now it's heading to 40-acre zone, you're taking away our property rights in that period of time. So I don't like it. I hope you will respect our property rights, and you make compensation for the Butte Fire victims, and to expedite things if we want to get down. You know, we need an economy in this county. I mean, a lot of retired people have moved up here, that doesn't develop an economy. And I see a lot of welfare coming up, and of course, the marijuana growers are just all over the place. And we need a good, healthy economy up here to really survive, and I hope you folks will take that, all that into consideration. Thank you.
Kevin Wright, Agriculture Commissioner. I think many of the folks who've talked so far are kind of missing the point on this particular policy, and maybe by making it a little more specific, it could be more powerful to everybody. I am also, if I had a piece of property, I would love to build on top of a half ridge, top of the place for my single individual home. And I don't think anybody has a qualm with that. We're talking about a major development when we're talking about this thing. So if we specified it similarly to something like this, minimize development project impacts on prominent slope exposures, ridge lines, and bluffs through clustering in less visible portions of the hillside, that that way it would be more specific and more in tune to what Peter's objectives are. So that's my comment.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for your comments. I think that, you know, if there's any entertaining of Mr. Wright's suggestion.
I'm sorry, your question again?
Would there be any entertaining of Mr. Wright, Kevin's suggestion about rewording of 4.3?
I would prefer to leave it out. I don't, I wrote it down here, and I don't see that it has much of an impact here, it doesn't change my mind about 4.3.
I understand that it's regarding development and not single home building, but I still feel that we're encouraging people to cluster on top of the hillsides, what I think would look worse than, and that's just my own personal opinion, as someone said, views are subjective. I'm going to stand on this, because I believe we've addressed it in other areas of the element.
Any comments, Ted?
Yes?
Now would be your time. Don't keep us waiting.
My lack of comment hasn't been my lack of interest. As I look back at the places I've lived as an adult, in Amador County, and in Calaveras County, and in Alpine County, all three of those homes were on top of a hill. And I would not have been there had it not been for the hill, probably, because I happen to like, I don't have a feeling of power looking down on other people's houses, but I certainly feel gratified when I get up in the morning and looking, and I see what the world looks like besides what my neighbor's window looks like. So I'm all in favor of people who want to live on top of a hill and have a view. But I agree with the egg commissioner, and that is the fact, there should be some way to keep it from happening on a grand scale. I mean, if an individual wants to live on top of a hill like I do, I like the scenic view from my house, even here in San Andreas, I can see a fair part of the county. And from my house in Jackson, I was on the highest hill around there, and I saw a good part of Calaveras County and Amador County, I really like that. So I'd hate to take that privilege away from people at all. So if there's a way to soften it by making it more apply to large development than single homes, I don't know how to word that, but I think there should be a way.
Well, and I'm, you know, in favor of, I think it's written quite well the way it is. I think it was Vicki, Vicki Williamson, that talked about the, many, many people who participated in the general plan update over the years. There was a comment that beauty's in the eye, the beholder. Well, there were a lot of beholders at those general plan update public hearings, and rural character and scenic beauty were certainly at the top of the list. And scenic beauty is, in this county, a key economic asset, and we place it in jeopardy by not recognizing that and creating policies that support that economic asset. So even if it, consideration for revising it to be more clear about size of development or would certainly entertain that.
I'd like to address your comment, which mirrored a comment by at least one other person from the public, and that was with respect to what did the public want, how did they express themselves in these public town halls held sometime ago? And we've talked about this before at length, but I'll, so I'll be specific to this particular one. I'm repeating myself from a comment that I made last year sometime. If you put everybody in the county in this room, and you said, how many want to preserve the rural character and the scenic beauty of the county, everybody's hand goes up. If you ask that same group of people, how many are willing to spend thousands of dollars each to buy the property that somebody else owns in order for you to, in order for it to be preserved the way you like it right now? Nobody's hand goes up. It's easy for people to say they want to preserve the look of the county, until it starts affecting them, until you start paying for the taking, because that's what you're doing, that's what you have to do. To make it legit, that's what you have to do, you have to pay the piper, and that, nobody wants to do, nor should they want to do it, they can't do it. It's not, it's not possible to, for the public, for the existing residents, to pay for all this land so that they can preserve it the way it looks now. It's not possible, and it's not right either.
And I don't think we're talking about preserving the look of the way we have it now. It's actually conserving the scenic assets that, you know, it's not like keeping things the same, it's relative to new development on, let's say, a larger scale, so that we take that whole sort of single-family resident off the table as far as being subject to this.
Well, I think it is saying the same thing, but even if you try to limit it to larger scale, what's larger scale? Let me, we've talked a lot about a piece of property that's got a hillside, it's an attractive hillside, hilltop and whatnot, and you've got view property potential for it, development, even a large-scale development. That's where your million-dollar homes are going to go. And the more million-dollar homes you've got in a county, the more your property taxes are. That million-dollar home costs $10,000 a year in property taxes. And that million-dollar home is owned by a millionaire, and he's spending money in this county, greater than, by a magnitude's greater than the average person in the county. It's, he's an economic asset to the county.
Housing's never an economic asset. Housing is not an economic development asset, because it's, you look at the economics of it, and housing does not pay its way in terms of services demanded or provided.
No, I've heard that argument before, and, you know, I'm not buying it.
Okay.
If a person's, if our property taxes don't pay our way, then our property taxes are too low. But if you have a... When you have enough people to pay for the infrastructure that's needed, that takes people, that takes population, and that takes not population just at a lower economic level, it takes population at a higher economic level. They more than pay their way. They subsidize everybody else. They're subsidizing me. I'm in the median mark, I'm in the median level. The people in the higher brackets are subsidizing me. And the more of those you have, the more money you've got for your coffers. But... But there's the fundamental issue here. It was said that the greater, quote, "greater public interest" is in preserving these views and whatnot. And I, I disagree. The greater public interest is in preserving the rights of people to do with their property what they can, what they want to. That's the greater public interest. Now, I do know there's a person that's gonna disagree with me. He's long since dead, but his picture's right here, and a handout that we were all given this morning by, I don't know which group. But there he is, Carl Marx. He would agree that the greater public interest is what you have to have in mind, not the individual's interest, not the individual's rights.
Okay, so it, it looks like we're, you know, we're still in the same position that we were before with 4.3 being deleted. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So let's move on, shall we?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're on goals and policies for recreation and resources. Comments on the goal?
Actually, I have a question that relates to the scenic component before we leave that. And it has to do with the language in the '96 general plan. And that's why I asked that a copy be made available here. Mr. Wooster brought the relevant page with him today. I wish I had brought mine. You have multiple copies? Oh, okay, here's, here's one for everybody. Great. Okay. Here's another one. Somebody wants one. Are we done? Okay. And the question for Mr. Maurer is what, if anything, would prevent this commission from moving to adopt the language from the '96 plan into this current update plan? And with that comes the question, has anything happened with respect to state law that has changed since '96 that would prevent us from doing that? Maybe, that's an awfully big question. I understand that.
The county has, you know, a full range of options in adopting the policy language it wants. And right now, this is your task, is to recommend to the board what policy language you think is appropriate. If you like a policy from the prior plan, and you think it accurately reflects the policy direction that we should take, then by all means, we could add it. There's nothing that I know that says that this policy is no longer valid. I'm not aware of any state law that would have affected the language of this policy. You know, over 20 years now, there's been all kinds of laws that have changed, but I'm not specifically aware of anyone that directed, I mean, as far as I can tell, there is nothing that the state law would prohibit this language. And I believe you're talking about policy 56A, "Proposed new developments shall consider the scenic qualities of the natural resources in the design of the project." That's the policy language you're referring to?
Yes, including the goal statement itself. In the general plan of '96, the entire scenic, well, the introductory part, the preface, that's also included. That's just a structural thing, that's been moved to a different part of the document. But the goal, and the policy, and the implementation measures are all contained in this very short little section. And I recall, and maybe my recollection isn't really accurate, so anybody can jump in on this, but when we had our joint PC BOS meeting in June, or was it July? June, I'll say. I believe the, the consensus view of the general plan, in addition to it being general, and we wanted it to be general and, and flexible, that it, it not go beyond what the state requirements, what the state requires us to do. So that's why I asked that question. So if we had language in, in the '96 plan that's perfectly acceptable today and complies with the consensus opinion expressed during that hearing, then why not just cut and paste it in there? Why reinvent the wheel when it didn't need to be reinvented? And that's why I asked the question about this, about the state requirements. I, I know we can't violate state requirements.
None of this language would violate any state requirements. And if you feel it would enhance the, this section of the element, then we could incorporate it. I don't think the language of the implementation measures are really implementation measures. There's sound more like policy language to me.
I agree with you there, that as it was written in '96, and maybe the, the thinking on general plans was a little different than it is now, and that implementation measures need to be more specific.
Right.
If that's, if that's the case, then, then that needs to be massaged.
Well, I personally, I mean, I like the, the goal statement that we have, but I'd be all for putting in a new policy that says, "Proposed new developments shall consider the scenic qualities of the natural resources in the design of the project." And then we could look at the implementations from '96 when we get to that section.
And the language that supports that proposal, and it, and it's there, proposed, here's how it reads for the benefit of the public. "Proposed new development shall consider the scenic qualities of the natural resources in the design of the project." Implementation measure. "New development shall be encouraged to avoid extreme topographical modification and may be required to restore natural contours and vegetation of the land after grading or other land disturbances." Cluster development will, with preservation of open space of scenic quality, shall be encouraged. So that has been addressed. And lastly, "New development shall be encouraged to be designed in a manner which is sensitive to available natural resources." So the basic components of what people, of the preservation idea are all contained in there, whether or not they are specific enough to meet the, meet the goals of specificity that we imposed upon ourself, that can be, that's debatable.
So what we could do is, if there's a consensus to add that new policy into our, this section, then we could address specific implementation measures when we get to it. But maybe we could just right now, is if there's some consensus to add the policy that says, "Proposed new development shall consider the scenic qualities of the natural resources in the design of the project."
I think that should take the place of 4.3.
Yes, I would agree with you. Is there a consensus on that?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah?
I think it addresses everybody's concerns in the audience as well. It, it kind of balances both sides.
Okay. And then we'll look at implementation when we get to it, and we'll consider the ones that were in from the '96.
Okay.
Yes? Okay.
Notes complete on that, then?
Yeah.
So V6 goes into 4.3.
Thank you for that interruption.
No, I was saying, that was a good, that was a good addition. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Recreation, back to recreation resources. And if anybody has any specific comment about the addition that we just made on, on scenic resources, you could address that when we ask for public comment on recreation, rather than doing that now. So again, goal?
Five.
Five, thank you. I'm staring right at it. Again, the only thing I would suggest is that contribute to the county's economy instead of economic development.
Why would be?
Yeah.
Oh, you had something to say?
No, I agree.
Oh, okay. So we're good, we're good with the goal, moving on to the policies?
I'm sorry, no. I, I'm questioning the word high quality.
Well, it's something to strive for, isn't it? We don't want to say mediocre system of recreational facilities, right? I mean, it is a goal.
It's just a strange use there.
Well, there, if there's another suggestion that, that does, gives the connotation of good, robust, fabulous.
Well, look, if you wanted to be more general, you would say recreational facilities that enhance the quality, yada, yada, and you would just leave off the first part. But I, I have a problem with the way it reads.
Yeah, I don't either, actually.
Okay, moving on.
Okay. So 5.1? I just had, I think it should be work with community organizations and special, special districts too, instead of of.
That was the only comment I had on that.
Now, this is gonna do this in every community, is that right? Including like Sheep Ranch and Glencoe?
Well, it's every community striving. Oh, strive, see, I'm sorry. Well, three, here's for every thousand.
So where there are community organizations and special districts, we would work with, the policies, we're gonna work with those organizations to try to develop recreational facilities at a ratio of three acres to 1,000 people. Doesn't mean we have three acres of, of open space in, in Sheep Ranch, when there's only 40 people that live there. But countywide, we're looking at having enough recreation, active recreation space to accommodate the population. The, the goal, the goal set at a state level is five acres per thousand. The minimum standard is three acres per thousand. We don't have that today. We have it in some communities, but not in all.
Maybe, I'm anticipating Mr. Wooster's issue. It looks like it's a goal for every community, when in fact, every community doesn't have 1,000 people.
No, and that's not what it says.
Well, yeah, it does. Well, it says you're gonna work with community organizations.
Then maybe we need to put in, at a ratio of, provide a minimum of...
I mean, is this supposed to just apply with communities with over 1,000 residents?
No, no.
You're supposed to do, it's, it's the county average that you're interested in.
Right.
So if you strike the language in every community striving, or just in every community, then you've got develop park and active recreation facilities striving to provide a minimum of three acres of local park land for every 1,000 residents. It's just, in every community is what confuses.
I can see the confusion.
So just eliminating in every community?
Right.
Any comments on 5.2 or 5.3?
5.2. It's a requirement for new development, but all new development or just development over a certain size? If you've got a, a very small development, you're, you're taking a piece of land and you're putting four homes on it, that's a new development, but...
So the way this is typically implemented is through, it's called the Quinbi Act? Quinbi Act. It's a provision of state law for subdivisions that when a certain number of houses are, are proposed, a number of lots are created, they have to either provide for parkland as a part of their development, or pay an enlue fee. And if you have less than 50 lots, the county cannot require the dedication of land, they can only require it in lue fee. And so that fee then goes into a pot. When there's sufficient money, then land can be purchased for development of park area.
Okay. Now, at what point does the enlue fee kick in? Every, every development?
Any creation of residential lots.
So if you take a, an 80 acre piece and you chop it into two 40s, there's an enlue fee?
It's based on the amount of impact that would be created. And I, I know that in other jurisdictions, there's a minimum parcel or a, a parcel size threshold. If you're creating large rural parcels, the parkland mitigation fee wouldn't apply. And, and that's up to the jurisdiction to adopt those standards.
Okay, so this is entirely aimed at, it's supported by the compliance with, with the code that you just recited, correct?
Yes.
And, and can we then use, make that reference in the implementation measures so people know what we're talking about?
We have.
So 5.2.
5B.
CUS 5D.
Right.
Parkland dedication. Is that the government code you're talking about? Oh, there it is, Quinbi Act.
Yes.
Continue implementation, fine. Okay.
I have questions regarding that. When, when you're talking about establishing the recreation facility development, would that be a public recreational facility, or would it be for that particular homeowners' association? So does it have to be a public land that they're contributing to, or is it something where a subdivision gets developed and they have a recreation facility that's provided to that subdivision and homeowners' fees are paid to?
There are provisions for private recreational facilities to offset public within the Quinbi Act.
Within the Quinbi Act?
Yes.
They can have their own park that they, only they get to use, and that's still compliant with the Quinbi Act as a, as a...
Depending on what's in that recreational facility. There are provisions for private recreation to offset the, the public recreation.
And they've met their, they've met their requirement for...
Yes, depending on the specifics of the project.
Okay, so then my next question is, we are currently enforcing this code and collecting mitigation fees for recreational properties on development?
As far as I know, we are.
Where would those monies be? And how would they be?
They would be collected and, and put into a fund for the development of recreation facilities.
Not the general fund?
Not the general fund. It's specific to, and, and normally it would go to a park and recreation district. Now, we only have one of those in the county that I'm aware of, the one here in, in San Andreas.
Are those...
How that's done in other areas, that's something I have not really been able to, I haven't really investigated yet. We haven't had, since I've been here, we haven't had any new subdivisions proposed that would be subject to the Quinbi Act.
We haven't had any development over 50 homes.
No new subdivision applications submitted or processed since I've been here. Submitted to our process for that matter.
That's an interesting thing to follow up on, and where those monies are and what we're, are we using those funds to take care of existing parks? Or have we worked anywhere?
They cannot be used for, for maintenance. They have to be used for development of, of parkland to support.
Well, I haven't seen any new parks show up.
Right.
So I'd like to know why we're not meeting that guideline.
Well, and that's something why we want to have it in the general plan, so to make sure that we do that in the future. You know, if it's been overlooked in the past, you know, then it becomes a policy of the county, we're going to, we're gonna implement it to its fullest, its fullest extent.
There would be, if all the money is going into, has to go to a park district, and the only park district we have is San Andreas?
It would have to go into a district that is, that serves that area. So if we had multiple districts, then it would go, if you're, have a park district in Murphys, and you're developing in Murphys, and it would go to that. I'm, I'm guessing, I really don't know, I haven't looked into this.
But this is for new development, recreational, it's not gonna be for existing community park areas.
So for a community to take advantage of the fund, they have to first form a... So, for a community to take advantage of the fund, they have to first form a district?
Well, it may be that the county would, I mean, if there is no district, then it would go to the county, and the county is responsible for providing that parkland.
And you're just not sure how that is...
And I just don't know how that's done, because we haven't addressed, we haven't crossed that. You know, I haven't experienced that issue yet in my tenure here.
The people of a community that doesn't have a district can come before the board and say, hey, we think there's a nice little spot for a park over here, can we tap into your funds?
That's a possibility, I think. If, as long as, I'd have to do some more research on the legality of how that, those monies are distributed when there is a park district.
Let me be more specific. My district, Ranch of Calaveras, has a property owners' association. And it owns some land. And a building and a swimming pool, and there's a lake and what used to be a park there. And it's gone downhill because there's no money for it. There's a bunch of little ponds around that they own. Is it possible for that association to say, "County, here's parkland that we have, that we can't afford to improve, that was once improved, but it's fallen into disrepair"?
The Quimby funds could not be used for maintenance.
That falls into the development, when that property with subdivision map act was developed, and that developer created that homeowner's association, then you need to go visit your homeowner's association and say, "We're not maintaining the park as we were required to in our subdivision map acts, and you need to raise your dues." Let's move on.
It's not especially my property owners' association. But I just wanted to know if this is something available to them? Or would they have to say, "You know what, county? Here's the land, you can have it if you'll make a park out of it"?
Can't do that, cannot do that, because it's part of your subdivision, and you have, that development has to maintain that facility.
Increase your fees.
It's a mess.
Increase your fees.
All right, so, 5.4 and 5.5?
Was there anything in 5.3?
Oh, did I miss 5.3?
I was just going to say, yeah.
Okay. Oh, 5.3.
5.3, the question I have are, what are important linkages?
Let's say you have a trail between Paloma and McCollum Hill, but there is a BLM land in between. County might work with BLM to provide that essential connection between the trail between McCollum Hill and Paloma. It's establishing those kinds of partnerships.
A linkage means a physical connection between two areas of recreational land?
Right, or it could be like a trail to a reservoir, or a trail to a snow shoeing trail, or something.
Or in Murphys, you've got two community parks, Feeny Park and the Seating Park, Murphys Community Park. Maybe there's, you know, working with landowners to put inside walks to get to, you know, between the two parks, or, you know, some way that they connect differently. Just where it's possible.
I just remember Oak Circle, I don't even want to have that discussion.
5.4 and 5.5?
On 5.4, what local and regional trail systems are we talking about?
Again, it could be the Coast to Crest Trail, a connection with a local trail. And again, maybe it's in, there's a, you know, going through a community and...
We've got the Rim Trail.
Yes, the Rim Trail.
It has several access.
Yeah, it's connecting local and regional trails.
And how would we do that?
Again, facilitating partnerships, just like I think the other one.
And not saying to some private landowner, "We're going to put a trail across your ground, so they can get from here to there"?
Oh, I don't think that, I don't think it reads like that.
I will just tell you from experience in my area, that it was typically land that the county acquired to make the attachment of the trail, and it was not an eminent domain situation. It was county-acquired property that allowed the trail to be connected. I didn't see any abuse in that.
Or if, you know, an organization wants to develop a parking area and restrooms to facilitate access, we would say, okay, that's consistent with our general plan. That's a good thing for us.
We need to do that in Murphys.
Well, it looks like kind of a definitive goal. We're going to provide these important linkages, and it would be nice if they're there, and it's practical to put them in. It enhances both pieces of property, let's say, both recreational facilities. But it just, when we definitively say we're going to provide something, we might be setting our...
Where are we that we're providing?
In 5.3. Well, you could say you support important linkages. I think that's probably a much better word.
I agree.
I think it's the active phrase that is, "Pursue the partnerships with public and private entities to make the most of limited funding." And maybe the grammar is not quite right, so that it's the partnerships that provides the linkages, not that the county's going to provide the linkage.
Right, yeah.
Provision of important linkages. Pursue partnerships that, to make the most of limited funding.
You don't think just changing the word to "support important linkages," linkages, no matter what direction it comes from, that we would be...
Or "and provide," or "that provide important linkages"?
Mr. Mowers suggested edit, shows the reader, who's going to actually do this?
So, why don't you just say share maintenance costs? "That provide important linkages between recreational facilities and generally expand the quality and quantity of recreational opportunities."
Read that again, I think you're on it.
"Pursue partnerships with public and private entities to make the most of limited funding, share maintenance cost, or, maybe, and share maintenance cost, that provide important linkages between recreational facilities and generally expand the quality and quantity of recreational opportunities countywide."
I think your "that" phrase actually belongs up ahead. Pursue partnerships with public and private entities "that..."
Yes, I would agree.
And then do the following things.
Sure.
To make the most of limited funding, share maintenance cost, provide linkages, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
I'm lost.
5.4 or 5.5? Oh, we did, we kind of talked about...
We already did.
Any...
Nothing from me.
Okay.
I don't understand 5.5, I need some clarity. "Design and locate to minimize ongoing maintenance costs." Can I get some clarity on that one? It doesn't read right.
It is a bit odd, I'm just trying to think. How would you, you'd locate one closer to other facilities or something, or if there's already...
But that's kind of not the idea, is it?
No, it goes back to the linkage comment.
Well, maybe we just design recreational facilities, it's probably, and locate part.
The locate is a little odd.
I suppose there could be some cost associated with where you put facilities.
So, the goal will be, the policy is, don't build something you can't maintain?
That'd be your homologous...
So, "Design recreational facilities to minimize ongoing maintenance costs." So...
Remove the word "and," locate.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, then I can go with it.
All right. All right, so, I think we'll hear from the public on recreational resources. Now's your opportunity.
Oh, you wanted to open it up to them to, you wanted to open it up to them to comment again on scenic, because we added to that discussion.
Comment on scenic only to the...
To the extent of...
Of the new policy.
Correct.
That's it, I would like to limit it to that, not carte blanche. Any comments?
Hi, Colleen.
Hi, I think we're just all wondering the same thing. Could you clarify what you did there?
On the scenic...
Yeah, because we don't have a copy of that, we don't know what you're referring to.
So, in the 1996 general plan that Mr. Toono has provided, there is a existing policy in the existing general plan that says, "Proposed new development shall consider the scenic qualities of the natural resources in the design of the project." That is now going to be the new...
4.3.
4.3.
And that is, is this from the existing open space element of our existing general plan?
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay, just so we know what happened. Anyone else? Okay. Must be doing something right there. Shall we go to about 12:30? What do you guys think?
Did you say 12:30?
Yeah, shall we keep going?
Whatever.
What? All right, let's go to goals and policies, cultural and paleontological resources. Any comments on the goal or the policies?
I didn't have anything on that.
Not on the goal statement.
On the policies?
Yes, I want to know, what is our guidelines for determining what is significant? What do we rely on for that?
And where are you seeing that?
Six one.
Six one? Okay, I see, all right.
See it?
I got it.
So, is that...
So, when any new development is submitted, we require that they do some type of archaeological or historical analysis to determine level of significance. That's required to be done by an archaeologist or historian. They would then make the recommendation to us whether or not the resources that are out there are significant. We also work with the State of California, I'm drawing a blank on the agency, that has guidelines of what's significant. And those professional archaeologists know what those are, and that's how it's established.
Central California Information Center?
That's the database, but it's through its State Office of... Judy, is still there?
Joe, you'll know. What's the name of the...
What's the agency, I'm just drawing a blank on the state agency that sort of oversees...
State Office of Historic Preservation.
Yeah. So, they have established guidelines that set what was considered significant.
So, it's professionals that determine whether the project is significant or not?
Right, what I'm doing is...
Or the resource, the archaeological or historical resource is significant.
Okay, I'm flipping back and forth between the policy statement and its implementation measures to make sure that whoever reads this has enough specificity as to what we mean by "significant", that they don't have to come and ask. That's my procedure here.
Yeah, I don't know that the general plan is going to identify what resource is significant or not.
No, but if it references, as you say, the need for an archaeologist to come in and make a recommendation, and there's a few other things, should that, looking ahead to the implementation measures, should that be a component of the implementation measure? Or is that too much detail for an implementation measure? And then they have to go to a code, county code, to say, okay, here's what the county wants in this area?
I believe that's too much detail for the general plan, is to try to list, you know, what is the standard of significance for archaeological or historical resources?
Yeah, I wasn't actually trying to get the standards in there, but just how those standards would be determined. So, a person reading it says, okay, in this area, they are looking at the opinions of professional archaeologists? Or they're looking at something else? Someone looking at it fresh, would they have enough direction from the implementation measures that on their own, they can then go and do their homework and find out?
I believe so, and I think Measure 6C probably most closely talks about the standards that...
In the second sentence?
Yeah.
And third?
And third, yes.
Yeah. That answers my question.
But the directive that this has of the county is, we will adopt those standards and make them available to the public. So, if someone comes in and says, "What do I need to do to address archaeological resources?" Well, you have to have an archaeological survey, and boom, here is our standards that we have of how that's going to be done and what the level of significance would be. Right now, it's more sort of the opinion of the professional archaeologists in consultation with Office of Historic Resource or the Native American community or whoever else is involved in the review of that. So, this provides a little more guidance to someone, saying, "Here are our standards. Here's what we consider special."
And a person who wants to do something with a piece of property and disagrees with those opinions, has to go through an appeal process? Or do they even get that far? What rights do they have? My concern is that...
I guess it goes to, then you get differing opinions from different professionals. If one professional says, "Oh, this is a significant historic resource", and someone else is saying, "No, we don't think so", then you sort of have to compare the, you know, the validity of each professional judgment and the determination, this is significant or no, it's not.
But there's an avenue.
Yes, yeah. I mean, basically, the approving authority in its review and approval of the environmental document, if someone, if one archaeologist or organization is saying, you know, "This resource, whatever it might be, is significant, and you should avoid it", or somehow mitigate the impact to that. And someone else is saying, "No, it's not significant, and here's the reasons why", and so therefore, you don't need to, we've documented it, we've, you know, we've got the historic data on it, and you can go ahead and, you know, put a new commercial building over it. That's something that, as a county, the approving authority is going to have to determine, have we adequately mitigated the impact? And we will rely on the expertise of the professionals involved. And when you have differing opinions, it makes it difficult. We sort of faced that recently with the determination on Section 035. Different opinions on, you know, different technical opinions of what's significant. The measure would be tried to establish a firmer level of, here's the threshold, you know, so that it's more known upfront. These are the kind of things that we would determine to be significant. But not being an archaeologist or historian or have expertise in that field, I really wouldn't know what those are, so it's something the county would have to, you know, do in the future to establish that. In the meantime, we continue to use the existing system, which seems to work fairly well. I think most people recognize that certain things are important and others aren't. And most historians and archaeologists will agree with that.
Let me tell you what my concern is, and try to make me feel better about it. It puts a lot of power in the hands of unelected people that have a profession, no question about it. They are professional archaeologists and cultural people and whatnot. But if those people can shut something down, because they've got an opinion that there's an important cultural, historic issue, then those decisions have to be appealable without the property owner, we'll call him, having to go out and shop for another expert. They ought to be appealable before this body or some other body.
They are, they are. The process allows for that right now. And again, the policy is not so much that we're establishing what the threshold is. The policy is that, when you're designing your project, try to avoid those resources. So, if you know that there is a, you know, Native American village, or there's an old historic structure or something like that, design around it. That's the policy. So, we're telling the developers, if there's a significant resource... So we're telling the developers, if there's a significant resource out there, you have the ability, we can, in some cases, say, you know, we've analyzed it, there's an impact, we recognize this impact, but because of the importance of this project, we're going to go ahead and allow it to move forward anyway. We've done everything we can to mitigate, and there's a procedure to go ahead and do that. It's not quite so easy when you come to Native American resources, but, you know, there's some ways that you can design, you know, around a project. But the focus of the policy is saying is that, where we can, let's avoid it. Let's, you know, you don't have to put that house right there, move it over, you know, have that as part of the open space area. Or design the commercial structure so that's in, you know, an area that's retaining its, you know, its natural state, and you put the buildings over here instead. That's what the policy is trying to get at.
Okay, and then going back to the policy itself, 6.1, by new development, there's no size limit there? There's no threshold?
Again, it would be discretionary.
Okay, so discretionary...
Just by its nature of being a general plan...
Discretionary development zone.
Yeah, we're not talking about the construction of a single-family home.
Okay.
One existing lot. It's subdivisions, it's, you know, conditional use, it's anything that comes before this body where we need, where we have a discretion in our ability to approve it.
Okay, do you think it's important to put discretionary whenever that's the case? Or is that a footnote to the whole general plan?
I think that that is... Unless the county were to adopt a policy that says, we are going to apply the general plan to all ministerial development, the law is basically geared towards this applies to where the county has discretion.
Okay.
It also applies to the county's activities. So if the county is adopting a new ordinance that may, then, you know, the standards would say, okay, well, are these reflective of our general plan? It'd be hard to come up with example where it wouldn't be right now, but... So we would look at our general plan when we are adopting ordinances and standards and guidelines to say, well, you know, if we're working with archaeological standards, what's our policy? Well, we want to avoid it. So that's going to be the number one directive that we provide to designers, or in our code standards, that say, you know, here's what we want, we want avoidance.
Okay, I understand, thank you very much.
Are we moving on to 6.3?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So on 6.3, it references for the implementations to go to the land use, but land use doesn't reference back.
Where's this 6.3?
Yeah. So it's at LU4A, LU4D, and LU4E?
Oh, I see.
Is that correct? We're going into the land use?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so the idea here is that those, and we need to go back, and this is one of the things we often do when we're all done, is where we've had interconnecting... I wasn't considering this, or I didn't think about this directly when we were working on land use element. We need to go back and add the reference to this policy when we finalize everything with the land use element.
Okay. So my following question on that would be, would be the second part of this sentence, "Design as a featured element and an asset of the design." Give me some example of what you mean by that.
Let's say you have...
Old rock walls?
An old rock wall, or a building, or something like that, that you can have as a feature of, you know, the parkland, or the entryway to a commercial development.
Okay.
So rather than...
So you're just folding what is existing into the development?
Yes.
You're not requiring the developer to build new to look like that existing wall?
No, understanding that it's an asset, rather than ignoring it, or, you know, is saying, wow, this is an asset, we should really capitalize this on this in our design.
Does it read that way to you guys?
It reads that way to me.
Read that, okay.
And, you know, the parameters were feasible. It may not be feasible in all cases, but it was possible.
It'd be nice if it was.
Yeah. You know, if they can design it so that this, you know, old stone building or something is retained and...
Prominent, reused somehow, yeah.
I like that idea, I'm all for it. I just wanted to make sure you're not telling the developer he has to...
No.
No.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess I'm wondering, why shouldn't that be a decision for the developer in light of the market? If it makes sense, do it. If it makes sense to ignore it, ignore it. I mean, you're not going to tear it down.
Well, you don't know that.
Why is the county getting into the business of telling him what he has to feature in his design?
Because it's a cultural asset that we all enjoy. Rock walls. And again, we're feasible.
I was focused on the word "we're feasible," and you're...
And what's the problem with telling a developer? Those features are important to us, so...
We'd like to see them.
We'd like to see them. You know, could you, is there a way you can incorporate them? Because they are part of our heritage, they're part of our past.
But is that what it says? Or it says, or does it say, we think it's an important cultural thing, and you need to include it in your development?
Says we're feasible.
That's the problem. Because lots of things are feasible, but not necessarily desirable on the part of the person who's spending the money.
I mean, this reads to me as...
Because they encourage the inclusion of, if that's...
There, now you're on it. It's, that's the difference. We can say to this developer, we really, this has been around a long time, you know, people sort of think it goes with the community, can you include it? He says, yeah, I can do that. And that's his decision. And if he wants to be the good neighbor, he's going to do it.
It would read how, Peter?
"We're feasible" encourages the inclusion of cultural resources into new development design as a featured element and asset of the design.
Well, actually...
Maybe the word "feasible" is not necessary at that point.
What does "featured element" mean?
A rock wall, a historic, an old barn, something that is a cultural asset.
I must be misreading this. If you took out the phrase as a featured element, and in fact, you took out everything after new development design, wouldn't that do what you want to do?
That's right.
The rest of it reads to me like you're telling me he has to advertise it.
It elevates the cultural resource element component to a featured status, whereas I think Mr. Booster's saying, if it's in there, that it's in there, what's the difference? How do you make it featured? How do you give it such status that it makes it a featured component of the development, rather than just it's included?
I know, the other part, the place I think of is the Placent Valley Springs, you know, when you're driving by, you know, and there's that big rock formation, you know?
Castle Rock.
Yeah, so that, I mean, if that were ever developed, I'd like to see sort of that, you know, that's not a cultural resource, I guess. But to me, it's like, if that could be featured in the development, it's just like, hey, that's a kind of a key part, it's kind of identifies our community, it's important.
Yeah, but that's not a cultural resource.
I agree with you, I'm just saying it's the same, like you do. You know, it's like, let me give you an example.
So an example that I experienced previously...
I know all about the rock walls. They fall down.
Peter's got an example here.
There was an old historic cemetery in the middle of a large commercial area. And the original design was basically sort of have the buildings, you have to preserve the cemetery, that could move, and they couldn't disturb that. So they just, the original design was that all the backs of the building were surrounding it, and there was this little hole in the middle of the project with the small easement. And instead, they redesigned it so that that was the center of the development. It actually became more of around it was a public, private gathering area that became sort of the center of the commercial project, as opposed to hidden behind the loading docks of all the buildings. That would be sort of a featured asset. But I don't think we need to have that language in there. I think that's an option that people could have, you know, unless we want to say, you know, where there's something that is, I mean, obviously a stone wall, they're everywhere. To save them are nice, but they're not as important as, say, something in an existing stone building that you might want to design around and have... It's just, you know, it's going to vary a little bit on what the resource is, and how critical and how significant that resource is.
May I suggest a language change that I think allows for all those different possibilities? It's, you know, it's prominent, or it's just included, that kind of thing? And it uses your encouraged idea, "Encourage the inclusion of cultural resources into new development design where it is feasible, period."
I'm fine, that's good. I'm good? You guys good with that?
Does that mean the job?
Can you read it again, please?
One more time. "Encourage the inclusion of cultural resources into new development design where it is feasible, period."
All right.
That's fine.
Okay. So shall we take lunch and come back for a public comment? Or... Shall we try and get...
Let's go for a public comment, to freshen people's minds.
All right, so cultural resources, public comment, period.
That might be me, I'm your cultural resources person here today. I'm Julia Costello, I'm an archaeologist. We've had the company Foothill Resources 35 years now in the county. Judith Marvin's the historian, she lives in Murphy's. And we've appeared before this commission and many previous commissions and worked with the general plan. And I think you all are doing great. I have had some little editing things over various parts of this that I talked to Planning Director Maurer about, and they're not major, we're going to incorporate them. I do want to give you another example, actually right here, of a historical feature that was made an asset of construction, is up at the new courthouse. There was a big bedrock mortar, we did the study for that. And they saved it, moved it, and it's in the landscaping front of the courthouse. And it's a big rock with grinding holes in it from the Mewoc. And everybody concurred, from the designers to the Mewoc, to us, that it's a nice asset. People like to see those. And so it was just moved with great effort and landscaped up there, but you can go look at that. And of course, Greenhorn Creek, the development there, early done with Barton Stevenson, we did all the work on that. And they have a wonderful set of walking trails in the Selkirk chimney. That big stone beautifully carved rhyolite chimney sits featured in their walking park. And they made that and the Chinese hearth and the Indian burial ground all part of the asset of their laid-out golf course and walking trails. So there's lots of things. And the people who live there that I know, they like it. They like the trails, there's interpretive signs, and they've been very supportive of that. It's been used and is a good example of how that works out. So I just, if you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but...
I do. So those were examples of where the cultural resources existed on the property, and they were sort of collected together to make an arrangement?
Well, the one in Greenhorn Creek, they're all in C2. They're all where they were, they're all over the, whatever it was, 300-acre development parcel of Greenhorn Creek.
Left them where they were.
They left them where they were. But they, we did the survey long before the design people got involved, which is the best way to do it. And the design people were given the topographic map of the development area and said, here's a site, here's a site, here's a chimney. And they laid out their roads, and they laid out their walking trails to involve all of those.
So not only to avoid them, but also to create, make them as assets?
And make them as assets. Some were not, you know, would be appreciated, but others, like this beautiful stone chimney, they featured in a park, and there's benches where you can sit and contemplate the landscape with the chimney there.
Do whatever you want to do on the bench, right?
What you want to do, yeah, dream of times gone by.
You don't have to contemplate anything if you don't want to.
So anyway, but that's an example. But in the case up here of the bedrock mortar at the courthouse, they had to slightly relocate it. Its position was not just right, but it, with effort, you know, could be moved and relocated into the landscaping front of the building.
Organizations like yours generally don't have a problem with that. They don't, you don't need to have it sitting where it was. If more people can appreciate it by moving it, then that's a...
Well, a bedrock mortar's a good example, because there generally isn't a lot of living debris around it. But if you're sitting in an Indian village site where thousands of years of artifacts have built up this mound, you can't move it. So then you're kind of stuck, you know, it's going to be where it is. But bedrock mortars are not only movable, the public can instantly appreciate them, and they're kind of indestructible. If the kids climb on them, it's okay, you know? But you do want to involve the Native Americans, but, you know, some things can be moved, some can't. The schoolhouse, the Altaville Schoolhouse going into Angels Camp was actually moved. It's six next to the fire department on the right-hand side, so you're heading down to Angels. And it used to be back about 100 yards and closer. And when they developed the fire station, they moved it forward, and there was big discussion about that. It's not in its original site, is it going to ruin its integrity? It's listed on the National Register, but they concurred. The setting was not that much altered, and they moved it. So it can be done, you could relocate things.
One question, and this was all done, the examples you've given us, without any requirement in the general plan, that it be done?
I don't, I don't know. Generally, these projects are under SEQA, and the general plan has to comply with SEQA. And so what the general plan would say, we have to comply with SEQA. Then you have a developer, resources are identified, some are significant, some aren't significant. How are you going to mitigate that? And then plans are made to mitigate it. So I think all of that work was done in compliance with SEQA in general, sure.
Thank you, Julia.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
No, I do have just these few edits, and, I mean, I could go over them with you, but I don't know if, Peter, you want to address that I could not take up time of the commission?
Well, you could.
Yeah, I'll be the time to do that, I think.
Let's do it now.
Because ultimately, it's a commission's decision.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got a chop-chop, though?
Yes, chop-chop. So the beginning of the cultural resource section on page COS 10 to 11 is just to put a definition of cultural resources there. There is a lot of confusion what's a cultural resource, and I lifted it right out of the California Register, which is the SEQA document that we comply with. "Cultural resources includes buildings, archaeological sites, structures, objects, and districts important in local, state, or national history."
And where are you?
I am on page COS 10-11. So I've kind of got all of the, your elements are spread out awkwardly.
Add that?
Add, just say definition. Under cultural resources, just say definition. Because a lot of people, they think it's only archaeological sites, or that it's only buildings. And so just make a little statement that it includes buildings, archaeological sites, structures, objects, and districts. And that's right out of, that's language that's a standard definition of what a cultural resource is.
And that needs it again.
Pardon?
Do you have that written down?
Yes, yes, I have all this written down that I can hand you. And I have copies, do you all want to have copies?
Well, maybe, it might speed things along.
I was kind of off writing another note. Where did you want to suggest that slug?
I need a few copies, so you might have to share.
Oh, that's fine.
So the red is what I...
10 through 11?
The red is the suggested edition? The suggested edition.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't have one for Peter.
That's right.
You can have this one.
No, I'll give him this one.
As long as that has it.
It's in the background.
All right, so adding a definition.
And I have the little webpage reference, but that's the California government definition of cultural resources.
Okay.
So I didn't make that up. And then in that first paragraph is "provide courtesy of," and Judith Marvin would love to have her be the only name in there, but actually, it was a lot of effort, and she agreed to take that out. The county's history, I'm just, it involves prehistoric sites as well as historic sites. So that last sentence of the first paragraph lists aspects of the county history, but we should start with prehistoric Native American occupations, mining, agriculture, water, transportation. And then we add two bullets to that list addressing prehistoric remains. It just kind of makes it more inclusive right there. And then the only other change, under Native American resources, on the second page of the paper I handed out, and this is, I had brought this up before, when we were in the technical report to this commission, and that this is a sentence that has been in every general plan forever, and I am trying to weed it out like crabgrass. in every general plan forever, and I am trying to weed it out like crabgrass in your lawn, and it persisted into this document, but in Calaveras County, the Miwok villages are not clustered along the McCollum, Calaveras, and Stanislas River trade, so we just want to take it out, just pluck it out. And right in front of that, in the hospital, right here near the government center, where, I don't know, 25, 30 burials have come up and all that, it's not on a major, major , okay. So that's, and then the last one is down, the last sentence, "The Miwok are famous for their beautifully made baskets, not stone bowls." These are little details, but it's nice to have it accurate. We're going to live with this a long time. And the only other edit I had is, we have a, an archaeological sensitivity map that is now 30 years old and is not workable, and this very good recommendation redoes it so that it's more accurate. But I just changed the wording, it's an archaeological sensitivity map, not a Native American sensitivity map. So those are just my suggested wording to make it more accurate there.
And that last is in the implementation program, right?
Yeah, the COS 23, page COS 23.
Any questions, Julia? No?
I'm here.
Thank you very much for those-
Oh, good.
-suggested edits.
Well, I would suggest we include all of them.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah. All right. We have those consents, as well. We're going with them.
Thank you.
And here, you've got the notes written for you, Peter.
Yeah.
Peter, it is Chenlin, and historical item is, I believe Chenlin has some certain amount of history. I realize that a good number of people here, the world starts and ends on Highway 4, but Chenlin has a little bit of history. Nobody talks about it, but they do, it's quite substantially old community down there. If you take a look at that, how old it is, I'm not going to tell you what year it was and so on, but it was a very important section over there. That's one thing. The world does not revolve around Highway 4 and 49, believe me, either up, going up or down. The other thing is that a number of times it was noticed, well, it's private-public funds. Public funds and private funds. We bought up Rancho Clubhouse. That's a nonprofit organization, nonprofit mutual benefit corporation by the state. It's not exactly private. It's not a private. It's a state-recognized nonprofit mutual benefit corporation, homeowners association, right? Same between public and private. The good people in Rancho, they work their butt off, free. They have a basketball court, a swimming pool, a tennis court, they give free, they make their money about bingo to help the firefighters. So for some reason, well, we can't really do anything for you for recreational activities for historical benefit, whatever you want to call it. That should be recognized. Those people should be recognized and supported. You want recreational, whatever you want to call it. They have Aquistarian horse-riding place all over the place.
Not anymore.
Well, it's still there, okay? You just see the barbed wire over there, okay? Anyway, it's still supposed to be there. You want recreational appreciation, something to consider. The railroad station, downtown Valley Spring, that's historical. There's restaurants there, that could help commerce down there. So it's not just all wineries, okay? But it does have commercial values to it and historical values. So please, don't forget, the world doesn't start on Highway 4 and 49. This county is a little bit bigger, and they do pay taxes. So when you say private and public, folks, the private-public is, the private individuals contribute, is basically the public that contribute. And there's something would be also nice to, historical section is, what is the cost and what is going to be the benefit? If people want that historical site, I don't care if it's whoever left it there, okay? It's still, what is it going to cost and what is going to be the benefit of it? It would be nice to put some numbers on it, because it's so valuable, and people are so concerned about it. I like to see somebody pass the hat around to save it. It's always, oh, you got it, fine. Pass the hat around, see how many people are concerned about that particular historical site. Pass the hat around. All the good people, oh, yeah, let's save it, it's, you know, it's worth the money. Good. Pass the hat around, see how many put their money where their mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. At this time, I think we will recess for lunch. We'll be back, reconvene back at 1:30. Thank you very much.